When called this meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Pursuant to NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley. Mr. Stafford Smith.
Here.
Ms. Fritsch. Mr. Book.
Here.
Mr. Hudak.
Here.
Mr. Ricardi is absent. Ms. Parnas. Mr. Heeman.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Do we have any resolutions this evening?
Yes, we have two. The first one, 2024-05. Resolution number 2024-05, resolution of professional appointments to the Board of Adjustment for the Township of Jackson for the period of January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024, rejecting applications received for certain professional contracts, holding over all professionals, and directing requests for new proposals for said positions. Approved.
Through the chair, make a motion to approve.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch. Mr. Book. Mr. Hudak. Ms. Parnas. Ms. Bradley.
We also have resolution number 2024-06. That's the resolution, amending resolution 2024-02, previously approved based upon changes to the designations of the subject parcel on the tax map of the Township of Jackson during the application's pendency for property located at Freehold Road, Block 1004, I'm sorry, 10004, Lot 81. Eligible to vote are Mr. Book, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Hudak, Mr. Stafford Smith, and Ms. Bradley.
You need a motion and a second, please.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Mr. Book. Mr. Hudak. Ms. Parnas. Is not eligible to vote. Ms. Bradley. Yes. Minutes from Fran DeBella, December 2023. That's all.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Mr. Book. Mr. Hudak. Ms. Parnas. Ms. Bradley.
I also have a voucher from the Township of Jackson for reporting secretary for $150. You need a motion and a second to pay the bills, please.
Move to approve.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith. Ms. Fritsch.
Yes.
Mr. Book. Mr. Hudak. Ms. Parnas. Ms. Bradley.
Announcements. Yes, we have one announcement this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Application number two, which is Rosenbloom variants 3464, that's for Block 13301, Lot 19. That application is being carried to the March 6th, 2024, meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. No further notice is required by the applicant, and the applicant has waived time. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for raising your right hand. And do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. If you'd each state your name and your positions with the board.
Evan Hill, Board Engineer.
Ernie Peters, Board Planner.
Jeffrey Papporo, Zoning Officer.
Thank you. That's correct, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, if I may articulate a resolution for executive session. Whereas the zoning board of the Township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4, and whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-12, provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution, and whereas it is necessary for the zoning board of the Township of Jackson to discuss in a session not open to the public matters relating to the item or items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B, the matter in question this evening being specifically enumerated as litigation, and now therefore be resolved by the town, by the zoning, by the zoning board of the Township of Jackson to enter executive session for discussion of litigation. It is anticipated that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination that public interests will no longer be served by such confidentiality. Madam Chair, if I may have a member make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Make the motion.
Mr. Hurley.
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch. Mr. Book. Mr. Hudak. Ms. Parnas. Mr. Heeman. Ms. Bradley. Ms. Bradley.
Move to come out.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak? Ms. Parnas?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman? Ms. Bradley?
No, Madam Chair.
So move on to application number one of the Keebler Family Trust, bearing three three nine five dead one.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members.
I think your mic's off. No, you don't have to stand up. That was probably not the right gesture. Sorry about that.
How's this?
Much better, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, board professionals. My name is Jared Pape. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Hileburn Pape. Our office represents the applicant, Keebler Family Trust. This is a, an application for bulk variance relief for a proposed single-family house. This application was, it's a continued presentation. We started this presentation in October of 2023. And although it's a continued presentation, there was a request that we renotice, we did renotice specifically to include a request to amend a resolution, amend a condition of a prior resolution to permit a basement. So before we proceed, I would like to request confirmation that the notices that we provided were found to be satisfactory.
So confirmed.
Thank you. At the October meeting, we had received a number of comments and suggestions for how to revise the plan. Tonight's presentation, we intend to show how we incorporated those suggestions into the plan that was resubmitted to the board. And I'd like to note that we had sent buy-sell letters to the adjoining property owners. So these are the letters where we are writing to the adjoining property owners, inquiring whether they have an interest in selling all or a part of their land to our client, or purchase our client's property. We sent those letters once in August of 2023 and again in November of 2023, and we have not received a response to those letters.
So just one minute, Jared.
Yes.
If you might. Just so the board is clear, this is an undersized lot case. The Dahlmeier case requires the applicant to send those buy-sell letters once. I had made a specific request to the applicant based upon representations made on the record at the last hearing that there was some interest in buying and or selling that portion of property. And Mr. Pape and the applicant did in fact comply with that request. They resent these buy-sell letters, and as I understand it, there again has been no response to Mr. Pape's office. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks. We have two witnesses this evening. Laura Lee Totten is the applicant's professional engineer. Ms. Totten testified at the meeting in October. I've asked her to address four main topics, which will be summary of changes to the plan, stormwater management, suitability for a basement, and tree removal. These were all topics that were discussed at the last meeting, and that's how we intend to proceed this evening. And second, James Higgins is the applicant's professional planner. So unless there's any questions or comments at this time, we'd ask to move to Ms. Totten's testimony. And as I mentioned, she was, she testified at the last hearing. Does she need to be sworn?
It's the regular practice of this board to re swear witnesses, so I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. Thank you very much. Good evening, good evening, Ms. Totten. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. If you would please state your name, provide your affiliation and credentials.
Lorelei Totten, Crest Engineering Associate, Sync 100 Reich Drive, Millstone Township, New Jersey. I received a Bachelor of Civil Engineering from Lehigh University in 1977. I passed my professional engineering license in 1983 and obtained my planning license in 1986, and both are still in good standing. I've appeared before this board, as well as numerous other boards.
Ms. Totten, will this board accept your credentials? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'd like to begin by marking or identifying the exhibits that we are relying upon this evening, which I see are up on the screen. In fact, I'd actually ask if you could scroll down. I think the second sheet is what we'll mark. So could you identify this exhibit, Ms. Totten?
Yes, this is the variance sketch that was previously submitted, which we revised in accordance with a TRC meeting with your professionals. The revision date on it is 12/7/23.
And do you want, we had prepared two exhibits, and we'll get into it in Ms. Totten's testimony. There was discussion as to a front yard setback variance and the ability to potentially remove that variance. So up on page one, if you could please scroll back to page one, just for purposes of identifying the exhibit. This is an alternative sketch. Everything is the same except for the front yard, front yard setback variance is removed from this version. If you could just read this one into the record, Ms. Totten.
The name of this is variance sketch alt dash A, and it's dated 12/7/23.
Thank you. If you could scroll back to the second page. Ms. Totten, if you could please just walk the board through the changes that have been made to this plan.
Yes. We, we added approximate locations of the existing homes on the adjacent lots. They're shown in dashed lines on either side of the proposed lot as requested. We moved the driveway from the left side to the right side, as was suggested. We put a double row of evergreens along the property line adjacent to Lot 19, as was suggested. We also added grading and showed that the water follows the current drainage patterns with a high point a little ways off the front of the property and flows to the rear. And corner grades on the home and the garage so that you can see that it will fit properly. Just make sure I got them all. Oh, we also conducted tree surveys, a tree inventory in two locations within the development portion of the site, resulting in 10 in one of the locations and 11 in the other. Now, these were trees that meet the ordinance requirements of those that need to be located six inches and greater. And the types of trees are listed on the plan. I don't think you need me to read them off to you unless you would like me to.
In case you didn't mention it, did you mention the rotation of the footprint?
And most importantly, saving the best for last, one of the items that the board members suggested was to rotate the house 90 degrees so that the narrower side was to the front of the lot, increasing each of the side yards by 10 feet from 20 feet to 30 feet on each side.
Thank you. It's a summary of the changes to the plan in response to the comments we received at the last hearing. Moving to stormwater management, we had previously discussed that it's the applicant's intention to ultimately not build the proposed house themselves. They intend to sell the lot, and we agreed that as a condition of resolution compliance, either plot plan level or engineered design drawings would be, would need to be approved by the board's professionals. This includes stormwater management. But Ms. Totten, could you just speak to what your office did to investigate or study the property to determine what the appropriate stormwater management system would be here?
So we conducted a test pit that is actually located at the back of this, the house box that we show on the plan. So it's between the house and the garage, and the results of that test pit were reasonably good for purposes of providing both septic system and dry wells, because they both need soil that the water can percolate down into. So we feel pretty comfortable that a dry well system could be designed, capturing the runoff from the roofs. We show two dry wells, one on each side, assuming that the peak would probably run down the length of the house, collect the gutters, the runoff from the gutters, and allow it to percolate into the ground. And then, of course, larger storms will flow on towards the back of the property as they do now.
Thanks. And with regard to the basement, the basement is proposed. What steps has your office taken to confirm that the proposed house could include a dry basement?
Additionally, we, that soils test pit that we conducted, we obtained a seasonal high water table based upon modeling, which is the worst case of modeling. It's either equal to or usually greater than where water is actually coming into the test pit. So the way we've graded the house, the basement is one foot above the water table. So that it's my opinion that the house can be built with a basement that shouldn't get wet.
Thank you. And at the last hearing, we were asked to clarify the number of trees that would be removed in connection with the proposed house. Could you please explain what your office did to quantify the number of trees that would be removed?
Based on the square footage of the two 50 by 50 spaces and the number of trees in there, came up with an area, a tree per square foot that would be removed. We multiplied that by assuming everything from the right of way to the rear clearing limit would be removed. And we came up for this plan, the variance sketch, 84 trees, six inches and greater, that would be removed to construct this house. Do I have a point? I do. I don't know if it works.
We could.
So, let's see, I don't want to get anybody in the eye with this. All right, so what was I, oh, so we have two square areas where we conducted inventories. We just assumed that the entire area back to here would be cleared totally of trees, which might not be the case, but probably would be. And multiplied that ratio we obtained, and we came up with 84 trees, six inches and greater, that would be removed.
Thank you. I have nothing further, Ms. Totten, unless there's any questions or comments from the board or board's professionals.
Through the chair.
Ms. Totten, perhaps I didn't hear you correctly. One, I thought that there was a stipulation that may have been placed upon the record that there would be a stipulation to no basements on this lot. Is that stipulation still holding, that there would be no basement, or are we now seeking approval for a basement?
So there, the prior subdivision resolution from 1987.
That's the one I'm looking at.
Include, includes a condition that, that there shall be no basements.
Not to cut you off, but at paragraph two, there they had a board engineer advise the subject site is located in an area where there is a seasonal high water table. Engineer recommended that no basement be constructed, and that no, no basement be constructed on the subject property. The other one that I would like you to reconcile for me is also under subject, sub, paragraph B. Again, it kind of says the same thing. No basement shall be constructed on the subject site, and any home constructed on the site shall not be constructed in a manner so as to be built on a large amount of fill, creating a mounding effect. I guess one thing I'm curious about is the water table issue. Can the water table issue change from 1986 till now? I mean, can you reconcile after me, and also the issue of the basement? Thank you.
Speak to the water table.
With regard to the water table, there is a soil log, the results of our test pit is on the plans. And so we, just reading it, actually, I, we found models at 80 inches. And we found no water encountered in the test pit.
Excuse me. You're pointing to me and you're standing right, standing right in front of me.
I can't read this. I apologize. I can't read this one up here. So this is the test pit results, the soil log. So if you look at this part of it, you'll see that it says the estimated seasonal high water table is 80 inches. And up in around this one, it'll say models at 80 inches. So that's what we base the water table on. So models are staining of the soil where the water has risen up and has stained the soil a different color, and then gone back down. So no matter what time of year you do your test pit, you see that modeling of the soil or the staining of the soil, and you know that that is where the water table is.
Is that responsive to the question? That's correct. We are seeking permission for a basement.
Well, since we're on it, I'll try to address it now. The fact that they performed a test pit, a recent test pit, and they identified a seasonal high water table based on modeling of the soils recently. Seasonal high water table does fluctuate throughout the year, and it fluctuates because of higher levels of precipitation throughout the year. In fact, we're entering the period of time now between January and March, the seasonal high water table tends to be at its shallowest from the surface. The, 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 the groundwater doesn't stain the soils as it moves. It alters the pH and chemistry of the soils as it gets saturated and then unsaturated. So it's slight changes in pH cause the soils to become discolored. And, and, and the applicant's engineer is correct that that's how we identify a seasonal high water table. Furthermore, they extended the test pit, I'm sorry, how deep did the test pit go?
Hundred and forty-four inches.
Okay, so seasonal high was at 80, but they continued the test pit beyond that and did not see any indications of groundwater, seepage, or groundwater. So what that tells me is it's more of a, it's more of a trapped condition, where it occurs during certain times of the year. It gets trapped at that level, but it's not the actual groundwater raising up three and a half, four feet. That generally doesn't occur. A blanket statement back in 1986 that the soils may not be conducive to accommodative basement, that's just, it's just that. It's a blanket statement. I, I don't believe it was based on any, any testing on this, on this lot and in this portion of the lot specifically. It was likely performed at other areas of the subdivision, which could have been subject to shallower seasonal high water table, groundwater elevations. So what the applicant's engineer has presented us is standard practice for today. If we were looking at this lot without knowing that there was a condition imposed in 1986, I would take no exception to this lot being able to accommodate a basement as long as there's a separation distance between the basement floor and the seasonal high of a minimum of two feet. If it's less than two feet, then they have to put in a foundation drain to make sure that if it gets within that one foot range, that it adequately drains, adequately drains the groundwater.
Any additional questions for this witness, Mr. Hurley?
Just one from Mr. Hill. Is there any impact on the adjoining properties relative to the basement, the water tables, here things of that nature?
No. I'd like to move to our next witness, James Higgins, the applicant's professional planner. Mr. Higgins has not yet testified. We'll ask that he be sworn, and we'll ask that he provide his credentials.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Higgins. If you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Thank you very much. If you would please state your name, provide your affiliation or credentials, please. James Higgins. I am a licensed professional planner in the state. I've been licensed for approximately 45 years. I have testified before this board as an expert in the field of planning. I've testified before numerous communities throughout the state as an expert. I've represented certain planning boards, a number of planning boards, and zoning boards, and municipalities as an expert in the field of planning. Testified before various superior courts as an expert in the field of planning, and been recognized by the Supreme Court also as.
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt you. This board accepts your credentials, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Higgins, could you please identify the variance relief that's being requested and walk the board through your testimony justifying that variance relief?
Surely, there are several variances being requested. Two of them are existing conditions which cannot be rectified. And that's the minimum lot area. The ordinance requires 130,000 square feet. The site is 63,000 square feet in area. The ordinance requires a minimum lot width of 200 feet, and the property has a width of 100 feet. Those are existing conditions. There is no available land surrounding the, the site that could be acquired, reasonably be acquired to eliminate or reduce those conditions without creating more variances on the adjacent lots, both of which are nonconforming. In addition, you have a variance that's being requested for a minimum front yard setback as proposed. The applicant's proposing a setback of 65 feet. The ordinance requires 80 feet. In the alternative, the applicant can move the building back 16 feet and have a 81-foot, 80, I'm sorry, 17 feet, have an 82-foot front yard setback. And that would eliminate the variance request. It's the applicant's request to be able to set the building back 65 feet, and I'll go into those reasons once I get to the analysis of the variances. In addition, there's a side yard setback requirement of 50 feet in the zone for both the principal and accessory structures. The principal building is being set back 30 feet on each side, and the garage is being set back 30 feet on one side and approximately 40 feet on the other side. I didn't see the plan to mention, but that's about what it is. I think there are positive reasons for the granting of variances. First of all, with regard to the existing conditions, as I said, they're existing. The site was actually created by subdivision in 1987, and at the time was fully conforming. So it's not a situation where there's a hardship that was self-created. It was actually a fully conforming lot that was made nonconforming by subsequent zoning changes. And there is really no way to reasonably acquire additional land to eliminate those two variance conditions as far as the lot area and the minimum lot width. Consequently, I think there are positive reasons for the granting of those variances, and I think as I will get into it, the subdivision or the development that's being proposed, I think, does not provide any substantial detriment to the surrounding area, so I think they can be granted. With regard to the setback, side yard setback, the ordinance again requires a 50-foot side yard setback. And if you do the math, if you have a 50-foot side yard setback on each side, and you have a 100-foot wide lot. side and you have 100-foot wide lot, you can't even put a, a wall in the middle. So there's clearly a hardship there. It's important to understand when you look at this, not, not only is there a hardship, but I think what the applicant's proposing is a little bit better than what actually is required by the ordinance. And the reason I say that is that at the, at the board's request, it was a very good request, the applicant flipped the house, provided 30-foot setbacks on each side so that a total of 60% of the width of the lot is, is open, doesn't have a building on it. With the ordinance, if this were a fully conforming lot, the applicant could have only 50% of the width of the lot that would be open. Cause you would have 50 feet on each side and then 100-foot wide, you could have 100-foot wide residence in the middle. So that, I think what's being proposed here, not only is there a hardship, but what's being proposed is actually a benefit, benefit in the set, provides more light air and open space in terms of the percentage of the width of the lot that's being left open than what would happen if this, could happen if this lot were a fully conforming 200-foot wide lot. So I think in that instance, there's a side yard setback variances can be granted and should be granted. I don't think there's a substantial detriment. With regard to the front yard setback, the, there are a substantial number of buildings on the same side of the street and on the other side of the street that have setbacks that are similar to or less than what's being proposed. And I think the applicant is trying to provide something that is consistent with the character of the area and will provide the minimal disturbance to the site as, as is possible. And the reason I say that is that he could move the building back to 80 feet or 81 or 82 feet. There are 15 to 17 feet of disturbance of the wooded area that wouldn't be disturbed if the, if the alternate, if the variance plan that the applicant is proposing with the proposed setback is provided. Therefore, I think it's, it's a better planning alternative to have a building that's more consistent with the existing setbacks along the road than, than having the building setback further and actually provides for less site disturbance. Consequently, I, I think that there are benefits to the granting of that variance and there aren't any substantial detriments. If anything, I think it's even a better solution than moving the building back to be 80 feet. I think also, as with regard to the C2 criteria, I think there's definitely benefits to the grounding of this application as proposed that substantially outweigh any detriments. And the reason I say that is that while you have side yard setback variances which are absolutely necessary because you can't build a building without a side yard setback variance, you have a number of other conditions, requirements of the ordinance that the application actually does not come close to meeting, I said, come close to exceeding. For example, the minimum lot coverage in the zone is 15%. This plan is proposing a building coverage of 5%, which is one-third of the permitted building coverage. I think that's substantial. As I said, I think that the amount of open space on either side of the building is like, is 60% of the lot width as opposed to 50% which the ordinance anticipates. And the rear yard setback is, is required is 50 feet and the proposed rear yard setback is over 400 feet. So in terms of light air and open space, very clearly this application does, does advance that purpose of the municipal land use law to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including residential uses. Again, this is a permitted use in the zone, so it's an appropriate use for the site. And as proposed, it's going to be a development that is much less intensive than it could be if it were a fully conforming lot. And the setback, again, is consistent with many of the parcels, many of the houses along the street, so I think it's consistent with the character of the area. So I does, think it does provide sufficient space and appropriate location for a number of, for a permitted use. And finally, to encourage the coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and the more efficient use of the land. And here clearly, to have a building on a vacant site is a much more efficient use of the land than to have a, to leave that site vacant. So I think it enhances that purpose of the municipal land use law also. When I look at all of these things, I think there are positive reasons for the granting of the variances. I don't see any substantial negative impact. You've heard testimony that the drainage is going to work and while there's going to be tree removal, any development on the site would result in tree removal and the applicant has tried to minimize that to the extent possible. So I don't see any substantial negative impacts that would occur and I think definitely the positive, the benefits of this application do outweigh those negative impacts and the fact that there is a substantial hardship also, I think outweighs the negative impacts.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Madam Chair, that is the applicant's direct presentation. The applicant's professionals remain available if there's any further comments or questions.
Any questions for this witness?
Through the chair.
Mr. Brook?
Uh, Mr. Higgins, as I'm looking at the plan that's up on the board, the property to the left of it was great. They sketched it out. They call it an existing dwelling. It's about 105 feet away from the property line of this project. And I believe it shows that it's about 59 or it's, yeah, 59 feet back. And then there's another building to the right, existing dwelling, that's about 25 feet from the sideline and it's 123 feet back. So I'm a little confused in terms of how do you reconcile those two from what might fit in?
The majority of the buildings along that street are set back closer to the street than what the applicant is proposing. You do have two to the immediate, if you're facing the building to the immediate right, those buildings are set back farther. But then the buildings, as you go to the, further to the right, the two buildings there are set back much closer to the street. If you go to the left, if you're facing the site, the building directly adjacent, directly adjacent to the site is closer than what the applicant's proposing. And the next three to four lots, I think it's the next four lots, all of those houses, again, are about, set about the same setback as that building to the immediate left of, of the site. So the majority of the buildings on that side of the street are set back as close or closer to the street than the applicant's proposing. You have the two immediately adjacent that are set back. And the applicant is willing to do the 80-foot setback and the reason he, he's proposing the lesser setback is because there's less impact on the property in terms of tree removal. There'd be another, anywhere from 15 to 17 feet of trees removed and he's trying to reduce the impact as much as possible.
Thank you. Any additional questions for this witness? Mr. Pape, do you have any additional comments before I open it to the public?
No further comments.
I'm going to open this to the public. If anyone wishes to make a comment regarding this application, please come forward.
Good evening. If you would please raise your right hand.
Sorry.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you would please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address, please.
Sure, it's William Skroczky, 84 East Pleasant Grove. It's S-K-R-O-C-Z-K-Y with a property to the right.
Thank you very much.
Sure. All right, good evening. My name is William Skroczky, as I just said. We own 84 East Pleasant Grove, which is a property to the east side, which is... Uh, that's over here. Okay, when we were looking to buy a house, we intentionally shopped for a home that was not in a development because we enjoy our privacy. We bought a house that had additional land and ordinance to keep our neighbors at a, at a good distance. Keebler's seeking to build using an R1 district standard rather than the R3 district standard that we're in. However, the R3 zone and the requirements should be held accordingly. In addition, the current R1 district requires 150 feet frontage and so Keebler still doesn't even have enough requirements for the smaller R1 zone. So in essence, he needs a variance, on a variance to get this built. In our last meeting, the board, one of the board members said that owners are entitled to use their properties when they can. Otherwise, we have the problem of properties being condemned. That's why we generally have the, we have to allow these developments on these undersized lots. Now, this shouldn't apply when it comes to the detriment of surrounding properties. Now, the original subdivision was made in 1987. That's 16 years before the three acre zoning. So Keebler had an opportunity to sell or develop the lot all that time, but he chose not to. Keebler owned the property for an additional 18 years after the R3 zoning enactment, but he chose not to again because he lived in the house right to the left of the land and it would impede on his own privacy and that's why he didn't. The variance application has been going on for just about two years now. This is the fifth time we've been here. And over that time, we've seen many cases where variances were denied for multiple reasons, sometimes as much as a few feet out of regulation. In this case, the property is less than half the required acreage, less than half the required area, half the required width, almost half the required left side setback and almost half the required right side setback. It roughly meets about 40% of the current requirements. The fact that the design needed to be turned on its side in order to squeeze it into the lot and then still needs a side yard variance of 20 feet means that you should vote no to this variance. The fact that the design had to have a detached garage in order to fit on the lot says that you should vote no to this variance. The fact that the average size of a house on this block is 2,800 square feet, but this, this house is proposed to be up to 4,800 square feet and is on an undersized lot, says that you should vote no to this variance. The fact that the average footprint of a house on this block is 1,700 square feet, but this, this design proposes a 2,400 square foot undersized lot, says that you should vote no to this variance. The fact that R3 zones were established to prevent overdevelopment, one of the adverse side effects of overdevelopment is flooding. And we have a serious flooding problem in this neighborhood and more specifically on my property, which is slightly downhill from the lot and we receive the runoff. Can you please bring up, uh, Skroczky one? Okay, now this is the end of my driveway. That's about eight feet of water going from my driveway out into the middle of the street. Now, this didn't exist about 10 years ago, but there was a house built to our right and afterwards this flooding began. Can you bring up Skroczky, the next one? Okay, yeah. Okay, so that is...
Um, just one second, sir. Let me just... Jeff, what's the proper marking on these?
I'm going to jump in with this. Um, I have a list of the exhibits that were submitted previously. Mr. Skroczky's first, um, of those who submitted exhibits, so I'm going to go with O3, Skroczky with today's D.
Perfect.
The whole thumb drive.
Okay, and that would be every, all the photographs as, as O3?
I think so, yes.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, so this is the end of my driveway facing toward the property that's looking to be developed. So it's slightly downhill and it pretty much levels off right on my property. Uh, can you go to the next one? This is my front lawn, which is again, right slightly downhill of, of the property that's looking to be developed. Uh, this water has nowhere to go. Uh, next please. Same thing. Uh, it's getting closer to the property. Yeah, and that's just showing that it's coming downhill and leveling on my property. Uh, next please. Yeah, and that is the front, probably five or six feet of their property going from the street. Okay, let me get back here. Okay, so the fact that the... Okay, is the fact that it caused flooding means that it should, you should vote no to this variance. The Keebler, uh, the Keebler provided proposal has them clearing a 100 by 200 area of trees. That means they'll clear the entire area boarding my front yard, backyard, side yard, and leaving my home virtually with no buffer between the properties, eliminating any front yard or backyard deck or deck privacy. And also, it'll degrade the value of my home. And yes, we consulted a realtor who agreed that the house this close would have a direct impact on the value and the marketability of our own home. For this reason, you should vote no to this variance. The fact that my living room has three exceptionally large windows facing a lot at 160 to 180 feet back, which is directly lined up with a parking and turnaround proposal, that there is our living room here and all three of those windows are facing the lot. Next please. That is our living room there, which the size and the shape of our house is not accurately reflected on their schematic. Uh, that, that living room actually is not on their drawing. Uh, next please. Okay, that is generally where their house is going to be and that's what they're going to see, right into our windows. Next please. Okay, that is one of the windows just facing right where their house should be. And as you can see, there's no, uh, there's really no trees there. Next please. Same thing there. That's just the next, the next window. And one more please? Yes, right there. Again, um, this is right where their house would be and there's no existing buffer right now and they're clearing whatever trees are there. Okay, and this is basically, it's, can you go to their schematic? Is that possible? Okay, so basically, there's our house here. Our living room is back here. Now, their cars will come basically down the driveway and turn right and those lights would shine right into my living room, right into those three big windows there. Anytime they pull a car in and you want to make a K-turn, those lights are going to go right into my window. Uh, now they're proposing putting up a couple evergreens. I mean, who's going to police that? Who's going to make sure that the evergreens are upkept and, and they're just not a permanent structure? I don't think it's a, it's a solid solution. So this will leave virtually no buffer between our properties and, and shrubs are temporary and who's going to police this part of the variance after it's approved or a year from now? Who's going to measure and enforce the translucency of a hedgerow? It's, it's just not going to happen. With today's high intensity LED headlights, it's fair to say that this would be considered a hardship and should also considerably degrade our quality of life. I would hope that the board would choose to protect us and vote no to this variance. The fact that the proposal submitted has several inaccuracies like the shape and dimensions of my home and the distances from the street means that you should vote no to this variance. Now, we do sympathize with the situation that Keebler's in. He's got a plot of land that he can't build in. But in reality, how does it differ from the additional unused acreage that I have all back here that I can't build on or that Phil can't build on behind his house or Joe behind his house and all the other neighbors in, in the neighborhood who have an acre or an acre plus that they can't build on? So they're in, in no different situation than we're in and we're still, we're paying taxes on this unbuildable land, so, um, you know, how does it differ? And in the end, is it really that bad for the township or the state or even the planet to have an undeveloped 1.44 acres? Just do the right thing for the, for the neighbors and the neighborhood and, and vote no to this application. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Through the chair.
Sir, did you receive the BISDA letter?
I did.
Thank you.
Sure.
I don't have the plan in front of me. What, what is this structure? Right there.
That's their garage.
That's the garage. So the access is along this side here into the garage?
The other side.
The other side right here?
Right.
All right. Sir, you, you, you mentioned some concern about the headlights.
Sure.
And I think that was one or, or several of the board members initially had brought up that as a concern. And the applicant is, is putting this, this row in here. Now, I know you're not excited about that, but...
Sure.
Um, if, if the flow, and I think we, we had talked about the flow around here, about putting the driveway this way has less of an impact on you, your property.
Mr. Hurley, we had actually, the board had actually suggested during the last hearing, the driveway was actually on the other side of the property.
Right.
And the, and the board had asked the applicant to consider moving it to the, to the side that it's currently shown on.
Right, that's my point. The point is that the applicant has in fact made an adjustment taking into... The point is that the applicant has, in fact, made an adjustment taking into consideration this piece of property and added this line of, of vegetation here to correct any problem with any turning in, in this area here. I'm concerned that if we, if there's a suggestion of moving this back, you have a tree line here. What kind of trees are they? Do you know? I mean, is, is it, is it a thick type of, of tree area? Is it, is it light?
No, they're, they're pretty well spaced out.
I'm sorry?
They're pretty well spaced out. There's like oaks, oaks, maples, some evergreens. But they're spaced out pretty well.
The problem that I have here is if, if we're required, if we're requesting that the building moved, be moved back to protect your, let's say, your, your site from, from where your living area is, now we have the same problem with your neighbor here where all of the area behind this house, it looks like he has a larger area available for recreation, whatever it may be. We would be negatively impacting on that. So it's, the problem that I have here, it's a give and take, you know? Paying Peter to, to pay Paul. So I don't know what your recommendation, do you have a recommendation here?
Uh, yeah, just to decline the variance.
Well, I think, I think it was, I think it was me who said that if we declined the variance, then the township would have to end up buying the property.
I know, but there's...
You know, that means your taxes are gonna go pay, and your neighbors are gonna go pay for this property. That's a problem. If this were your lot that was undersized, and we told you, you can't develop it, how would you feel?
I'd probably go with the, with the current ordinance. I said I'd go with the current ordinance and say, you know, that's the law, and that's how I abide.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hurley, along, along your comments, can I make a suggestion? If, if the applicant does depict a double row of evergreen trees along your common property line, and you made a fair statement that, you know, until those trees are very mature, they may not provide 100% blockage. The question I would have for the applicant is, actually, yeah, the question I have for the applicant is, would you be willing to put up a, a portion of six-foot-high fence behind that buffer on the property line? Not, not the entire side, but just to complement, just in the location of the evergreen buffer, a six-foot-tall wood fence?
If that's the request of the board, yes.
Okay, so, a lot of times buffers like that are, are created to provide both more, both an aesthetic and a functional purpose. And a solid fence would provide the functional purpose.
Sure.
Right? So it's just a matter of which side would you want that fence on? Would you wanna see the evergreens on your side of the fence, on that side? Or would you wanna see the fence on the property line?
No, I'd rather see the evergreens on my side, of course.
Okay, so the fence would be moved in a little bit from the property line, so... You understand, Mr.... Okay, all right. So that, I think that could help. Also, to Mr. Hurley's comment, if you were to move the house back, I think the applicant testified if they, if they moved it back another 16 feet, they wouldn't require the front yard setback. And 16 feet of additional tree coverage would result in, if you look at the percentage, probably an extra 15 to 20 trees being cleared. It's not a very dense, thick area, but it would move that whole garage turnaround area beyond the neighbor's addition, living room.
If those trees were removed, would it have any impact on drainage?
No.
Through the chair. Evan, you have me a little confused, at least part of the conversation in terms of the setback. I believe the plan that's on that board right now reflects their alternate A setback of 81 feet, which satisfies the ordinance.
No, this plan is not alternate A. This is the, this is just labeled variance sketch. Alternate A. Anthony, if you could go to the next page. Alternate, is that...
The, the original puts them at 65. They give us an alternate A of 80, of 81. And the drawing that I'm looking at shows the 81. But I, I'm trying to line up where the cars would come in on the driveway, where the lights would be, et cetera. I just wanna make sure we're looking at the same thing.
So that, that plan shows 81.5, it looks like?
Yeah, that's alternate A, I believe.
Yep, alternate A.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chairley? Just one other question. We were talking about consistency of the neighborhood relative to the setback, things of that nature. How about the height of the building, considering that there is a basement being installed? Does anyone know that answer? Maybe the engineer? I guess the question is, will, will the height impact the consistency of the neighborhood relative to the, the size of the buildings?
The height of the building wouldn't exceed what's allowed in the zone. I did not examine the heights of the adjacent buildings, but...
It will not exceed the height of the adjacent buildings?
No, because if it did, would, the applicant would have to come back for a height variance. So it will be constructed in accordance with the required...
That's not my question. My question is not whether or not it violates the, the height regulations. The question is, the height that's proposed, is it consistent with the adjoining properties?
I did not look at that in particular, because they were all single-family homes. I know there's some newer ones on the other side as well. I did not measure or compare the heights of the surrounding houses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Through the chair. Sir, can you tell me for the pictures you showed with the water collected on the frontage, how much precipitation was received and over what period of time that generated that?
I couldn't tell you exactly. That was a few months ago.
Do you know the date the pictures were taken?
I don't. This was postponed so many times that we've been holding on to those pictures for about three months.
So I'm gonna jump in here, 'cause I'm gonna caution the board on something. Any, any, if there are drainage issues along this gentleman's property or within the roadway in general, it's a township road. It's the township's responsibility, if they choose, to fix, ultimately design a solution to fix it. It's our responsibility here as a board to make sure that this applicant is not going to do anything to exasperate any existing drainage issues that may or may not be occurring. The road I live on has puddles and large puddles similar to that, too. They drain, they ultimately drain, they ultimately goes away, and that's a county road. So I, I think we're all used to seeing these. Again, our responsibility here is to make sure that the applicant's design does not further exasperate or cause any negative impacts to the drainage system. Whatever may or may not be occurring out in the roadway drainage-wise, that's not really the purview of this board.
But just the fact that it's being built is, is gonna cause flooding?
The applicant is, the applicant has provided a plan that meets or exceeds the ordinance requirements for stormwater, stormwater runoff as a result of their development.
From the house.
They're not responsible for correcting any issues off of their property or on yours. So if you live on, in a low spot, obviously, you could, you could take it upon yourself to obtain an engineered solution to correct that, or you can start talking to the town to see what they can do to correct that. But our obligation here is to make sure that any development that occurs on that lot next to you doesn't further exasperate that issue. And they've submitted a plan that, that shows that they can do that.
But when, when it was rezoned to R3, wasn't that addressed? Stopover buildings so the flooding would be reduced?
The R3 zone was created for a multitude of reasons, not necessarily for stormwater runoff.
Overbuilding would be one of them, I would say, though.
Madam Chairley? Mr. Hill, there was some testimony about the dry well. Can you educate me a little bit on, on... A, how does a dry well work? Is it store water? Does it discharge into, into the ground level? How does it work?
So it's not a specific requirement in town, but we ask applicants on undersized lots to help to further mitigate the runoff from the roof, the structures, so the roofs. And what they do is, and most of us have gutters, downspouts that discharge to grade. The grade's sloped away from the house, and it runs over the lawn. A dry well system incorporates that, but it takes it a step further. Instead of the discharging onto the ground at a downspout, it actually enters an underground pipe that goes to, in some cases, a plastic structure, or in some cases, a concrete structure that's perforated. And, and it allows the water to infiltrate into the soils. Because we have an 80-inch separation between the surface and seasonal high-water table, it's very easy to, to design and install a dry well. And it infiltrates into the ground, so it bypasses. It bypasses running over the surface and goes directly into the ground via a structure.
Where it's, where the dry well is proposed here, it doesn't impact the adjoining properties?
No, there's actually, I look on the plan, there's four, three or four dry wells proposed. Two in the rear between the house and the garage, and one off, looks like, I'm sorry, there's two in the rear. The ones in the front are the septic, it's the septic tanks. So they're collecting the gutters on the left side of the house, discharging to the rear by the back, by the detached garage, and on the right side, also by the detached garage.
So I guess my concern here is if we had a, a storm, and it produced so much water, by having these dry wells, the water essentially gets stored and dissipates over time, which means the, the absorption into the soil is not after the storm, but it's after a period of time when the storm has stopped.
Uh, it depends on the infiltration. Yes, yes and no. So it depends on the infiltration rate of the soils, and it depends on the intensity of the rain. So if the intensity of the rain event exceeds that of which the inf, the permeability of the soils, then yes, you'll start getting a, a stage, a staged occurrence in there that allows the water to fill up. It's just like a, just like your bath, just like your bathtub drain. If, if it's only open a little bit, it's gonna start backing up, right? If you only, if the, with a, with a full spigot open. But if the spigot's not fully open, but your drain's fully open, it'll drain freely. So the same thing happens under the ground in these types of systems as well.
Well, I guess that's my concern. My concern is with a storm, the water flows and, you know, the only thing I know about storms is the water flows downhill, unless you pump it uphill, obviously. So it flows. Now you have a situation where it's not flowing, that it's being, it's being held, and it, it goes into the soil over a number of weeks or days, whatever it may be.
So the dry wells are, the dry wells are only infiltrating, or we'll call managing, the runoff from the building's roofs, not the ground. So between the roof and the dry well, it never hits the ground.
But the roof's water would have gone onto the ground.
Would have gone onto the ground previously.
And then it would have flowed down someplace...
And stopped.
And then goes away.
Correct.
Now it's not going away.
Using a dry well system is more appropriate. It's actually a best management practice with the DEP's stormwater regulations for these types of things. So is overland grass flow, but you need much longer, much, much longer and vast lengths of grass to cleanse the water as, as opposed to a dry well. So it's the, this is the preferred method for treating roof runoff by far.
All right, thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you for coming forward, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward and make comment?
Good evening.
Good evening. If you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you would please state your names, by your last, and provide your address.
Joseph R. DeProssimo, D-E-P-R-O-S-S-I-M-O, 68 East Pleasant Grove Road, Jackson, New Jersey. Okay, just like Mr. Skrotzky said and Mr. Bavaro said at the end of the last meeting, this is the fifth meeting on this. It's almost been 50 hours collectively of all the neighbors that have come. We've never deferred the meetings. We've been here every time this has happened. And what, the only thing that keeps changing is the applicant. They keep changing their plans, they keep, they delaying. All I ask, and you don't have to give me an answer, it's rhetorical, is that tonight is make it or break it. 'Cause after the fifth meeting, it's, it's just getting wearisome. So again, the proposal keeps changing. I've heard the testimony, some of you remember. A normal house would be facing the street like all the other houses on that street. But they had to go with go-for-broke, shoot-for-the-moon, 4,800 square feet, so monstrous that it's gotta be turned sideways. In addition, it has an, its own two-car garage, giant driveway, and God knows what else now, now a basement. You guys have been, and ladies have been, very gracious. I remember Mr. Murphy two meetings ago, and I quote, you said to them that they needed to work on their proposal because if you took the vote tonight, you don't think that they would be happy with it. And I'm quoting you. Mr. Hill has given many opportunities to them, and you've been gracious to help them to get their variance. But this isn't, uh, this isn't a young couple whose aging disabled parents need a variance for, for an addition, right? A hardship. This is, we don't have a buyer. This is the applicant trying to get, shoot-for-the-moon to get as much money as they can for this property. So, as you can tell, I'm a little passionate, but I'm gonna try to tamp it down if I can. At this time, like what we're asking for, when I was in law enforcement, I had vulnerable people ask me, protect me, protect me. And I took that oath very seriously. I'm retired now from that job. I'm asking you, I have no authority here. We're asking you to protect us. So what's happening is, what's not being addressed is, is the flooding issue. And I'm hearing things that are untrue. Mr. Skrotzky came up and testified that some of those drawings don't represent the truth of his property. I can tell you when it rains, and you can come here, you can come to the house, you can come check it out. When it rains, especially when it rains hard from the Keebler property, it goes in two directions. I showed you pictures of my street. 60% of the street is covered with water when it rains. And I'm two houses down, Skrotzky to the right, Bavaro to the left. When it rains, for whatever reason, on that property, it goes in two different directions. There may be a crest, there may be other factors, I don't know. But I'm just telling you that I'm hearing things that are not accurate. If you come to the property, you will see. And we already, we already had a freezing condition, and we have ice on our street and our property. And you know what? We'll eat that, because we bought the house and we did our due diligence. This is going to change all that. Just collect my thoughts here for a minute. I do wanna refer to the proposals. There's the crest engineering drawings, which are up there, and the Remington and Vernick engineers there, which they submitted to you as well. It says, okay, crest engineering there. I actually had to go to CVS and get myself a magnifying glass so I could read the fine print. So under, but I do this, this is what I did for a living. On Article 19 on this drawing, which you can't read 'cause it's tiny, it talks about the roof runoff directed to dry wells, which is what we're talking about. But if you do the measurements, you find that they're just about 200 feet into the property. And again, it does nothing for the first 50 feet is where we're getting all the water. We're getting the flooding from the first 50 feet. Under RVE, this proposal, and again, this is not, this is not on their own proposal, on page three. It's right here. This is a six variance variance with two TBDs. And they can shuffle it around, do what they want with it, but this is not a variance. This is multiple variance variance, okay? It's right here in their own paperwork. So here's the issue with, with the drawings is, is that when you look at the proposed septic area, so we know, I've, I called Ocean County Department of Health. They deal with wells and septics. So when you look at the, the area, there's a mounting effect. So it's bad enough the way it is. So now we're gonna mound the leach field, we're gonna yank all these trees out of here. So we do have an exasperation and an exacerbation of the problem, because you're raising it and you're removing the things that are sucking up the water. So we are going to have more water. And once the trees are cut down and the mound effect happens, it becomes our problem. Now what do we do? Can't put those trees back in. I, I get, I get it. You gotta build houses, you gotta cut trees down, no problem. But this proposal is just for the applicant who lives in Florida. It is not for the neighborhood. I wanna read page five of RVE, and this is their proposal. Page five, section O. It says this, "The applicant shall provide copies of approvals from all other agencies having jurisdiction over the project. The applicant is requesting a waiver from providing outside agency approvals. Testimony shall be provided." So that would include, 'cause I call it the DEP- So that would include, because I call it the DEP as well, that would include state waivers and county waivers when it comes to septics. So these pictures are all well and good.
Sir, just one minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to clarify, the Remington Vernick letter that you're reading from, that's the report of the board's planner.
It's the report of the board's?
Board's planner, Ms. Peters.
Okay, so then who is requesting that the outside agency approvals, that there doesn't need to be approval from state when it comes to well and septic?
I can, I can, I can clarify that for you. And I'm the board's engineer. I'm not, we're, over here, we're not affiliated with the applicant at all. We review development applications on behalf of the board to hopefully make things better. An applicant has the right to request not submitting outside agency responses as part of this portion of the process. It doesn't mean that they never have to. So when they go to actually, if, if they were to get approved tonight, if they were, then they have, they have to, they have to obtain all necessary outside agency approvals prior to a zoning permit and construction permits being issued. That is just, the waiver request is only purely for this portion of the application. It doesn't absolve them of their responsibility. They have to get Ocean County Health Department approval for a septic system. They have to get Ocean County Health Department approval for a well. They would have to get any and all DEP approvals if there are any environmental constraints that are regulated on their property. They have to get fire, they have to get traffic, they have to get all of those, just not prior to proceeding to this meeting.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. If the gentleman back there can show my Google Earth picture of the Keebler property, just for the purposes of the record, Jeff, did we want to?
We're going to call it 04 DeProssimo, with today's D.
Thank you, Jeff.
04.
Some marked.
And Evan, while it's being brought up, sorry, I just want to ask a question of the professionals. What would be the purpose of not getting those approvals now?
So.
I understand that they'll have to get them, but what would be the purpose of delaying that?
Because they're not, the applicant's here for a variance only, the applicant's not here with a development plan, right? The applicant is here to obtain the variance, and if they do obtain the variance, they've already acknowledged that they would submit a fully engineered plan as part of resolution compliance. As part of that, as part of resolution compliance, we also make sure they have any and all outside agency approvals as well.
Madam Chair, Lady Maylie?
Yes.
Mr. Hill, one other question. Is there a change in elevation in the front yard there?
I'd have to look at the plan. So at the front of the applicant's property is elevation 120, and then it grades back into the property.
As it exists or as it's proposed?
As it currently exists. We don't have proposed grades on here at this point. I, within, we have a top-of-bed elevation of 121, which would be about six inches above existing grade. Nothing significant. It's not going to be a mounded septic system here because the seasonal high water table is greater than 80 inches, or is 80 inches. You don't mound systems out of the, out of the ground, septic systems out of the ground unless it's 60 inches or less. So it's not a mounded septic system. Based on what I'm seeing on their drawing, the property's going to continue to grade towards the rear of the property. It will just be the first several feet, maybe the first 30 feet that would grade towards the road.
I was more concerned, the gentleman mentioned something about the front yard, and if there's going to be a change in grade in the front yard, a lot of the flooding seems to occur in that direction. If there's going to be a change in grade, would it deflect the flow to the left or to the right affecting the adjoining properties?
I don't have topography on the adjacent properties. That's not something that an applicant is necessarily, an applicant doesn't survey topography on existing.
Well, I understand that.
On the adjacent lots.
But isn't it important to know what the topography is going to be in the front yard if there's going to be a change in elevation?
We do have, we have.
And does it, well, let me finish. And does it change the direction of flow?
So we do have some limited existing and proposed topography here. It does have to be further engineered in more detail, but we have enough information to look at it and say that they're not significantly altering the surface grades in this area, therefore they're not significantly altering the flow of water. They're not, they're not adding any flow onto the adjacent properties as a result of this construction. That's, so that's the easiest, that's the only way I can answer that question.
But do we know that without knowing the grade change?
Yes.
We do know that.
We can tell, we have enough information to be able to, where I can make that statement, yes.
Thank you.
Can you just bring it so that the street is dropped down and I could almost see the back of the properties? When I sent it, yeah, that, in that direction a little bit more? Stop, thank you. Okay. It might be just out of view, but Mr. Bavaro, is this, is this your property? Wait a minute. Trying to talk to you with these glasses. Where is, it didn't, it didn't look like this when I sent it in. I'm trying to find where the, I think Keebler's here. Is that right? Oh, that's right, because that's when they did it, when they had to take the pool down before you, before you bought the house. Just, for the purposes of the record. So this is Bavaro, this is Skrotzky. Does that sound right? Okay. So this is Keebler, right here. This is Keebler, all the way up here, goes across here and down here. This is Keebler. It's entirely wooded. Those are only the canopy trees that you're seeing. There's three levels of trees. There's intermediate trees, there's saplings, and actually right here, if you drop it down, you can probably see it, is the people behind us, okay? And what I'm, there it is. Okay? If we could just put it back the way it was. So what I'm trying to show is that it might be a moot point, because we got to move further, but Skrotzky's wellhead is 40 feet from the Keebler property. So according to Ocean County Department of Health, you have to draw a radius line from Skrotzky's wellhead into the Keebler property to get yourself 100 feet, and then you take a compass and you draw a circumferential arc in both directions, and that's the no-go zone for the septic. So what I'm trying to show here, before you jump in, is that, this is hypothetical, but what has to eventually happen is all four of the wellheads, because she's very close to the Keebler property, wellhead, 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 he's only 40 feet from the Keebler property, and the proposed Keebler well, you know this, if you, you know Ocean County, and I think all the counties run the same way, there has to be circles drawn, four circles. And there is, because this is an acre and a half, and because it's so skinny, there's going to be a problem. These drawings may not hold up, and it's something that Mr. Murphy actually said to me, which makes a lot of sense. So I'm just putting that in there.
So, again, I'm not discounting what you're saying, but you are, and it's honorable that you're doing the research like this. However, you're taking bits and pieces of regulations. The regulations also allow a reduction to 50 feet if the well, if the well is cased to a depth of greater than 100. So if it's, if it's 125 to 100, to a 250-foot well or beyond, then it does, there is no 100-foot separation, okay? I, my guess out here is your well is likely deeper than 100 feet, and it's also closer than 100 feet to your septic.
Well, mine, mine had to be 100 feet from, my septic leach field had to be 100 feet from my neighbor's wellhead.
From your neighbor's well, correct. But if you're, that's not the case, if the wells are deeper than 100, than 100 feet, cased deeper than 100 feet, they could go down to 50. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here to argue that point with you. I'm just saying you're taking bits and pieces of the regs and not the regs as a totalitarian.
I totally hear what you're saying.
And either way, either way, an application to the Ocean County Health Department has to conform to those standards.
Right.
They'll pick up on it. We here wouldn't issue any further approvals if the board were to approve this until they get those approvals. All of, there are, there are other people who are putting eyes on this yet, after tonight, to make sure that it conforms to all of these agency requirements. This isn't the end, this isn't the last stop.
Well, even if it was 50, and I'd have to ask Mr. Skrotzky, it's going in either 10, it's either going in 10 feet, because it's 40 feet from the line, or it's going in another 60 feet, depending on his depth, also depending on the depth of the major of the neighbor to the north, or actually would be to the, yes, to the north. So those two might end up doing that. Okay, I see what you're saying, I'll move on. Tree removal. So RV's, let's just back up for a second. When we look at the crest report, under Article Number 17, if we go back to their report, it states that only 84 trees will be removed in roughly a 20,000-square-foot area. So if you extrapolate 20,000 square feet up to 63,000 square feet, you're getting, so they're basically saying their, their tree study maybe said there was only 265 trees on the entire property. However, Mr. Bavaro and I counted actually several months ago, and we were up into the mid to high 400s. So I do understand, and we're talking about some of these companies that you hire will not, will discount saplings, will discount some trees that are, have a smaller diameter. However, those saplings still suck up water. So I guess what I'm trying to say is when you look at Google Earth, okay, and you look at all those trees, I don't think it's 84 trees. And I don't know, there was another thing in here about possibly waiving the tree removal permit. You know, if you're going to, I mean, from my calculations, based on maybe a third, right? So 20,000, they're talking about, that's about a third of that 63,000 square feet. If our counting is right, because we haven't discounted the saplings, you're really looking at close to 200 or greater. So, you know, trees absorb water, they just do. And that's another problem with this. Just about done. I do like that the MLUL NJSA 40 colon 55D dash two was quoted, because under B, it says to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and man-made disasters. The thing is, if these calculations aren't done properly, the neighbors are going to suffer. And when I talked to the DEP, I do have a case number, they did say that there's supposed to be calculations done, and again, this might be at a further date. There's calculations that need to be done to show that there should not be any net increase in water going in either direction. So again, it might be a moot point, but, you know, I'm just bringing this up, and I'm also asking you to look out for us as the neighbors, because there's too many question marks in this. There's too many variances, there's too many possibilities, there's been too many changes in these proposals over the, over the last five meetings. And maybe I'm a little bit upset, but, you know, it affects me and my family. And when, when it rains and the water comes my way and it freezes, as it does with Phil and Jack's property, it becomes an ice skating rink. And my house is only 43 feet, I don't know when it was built, I bought it four and a half years ago, it's only 43 feet from, from the road. And there's already an icing condition. My son's bedroom is in the front, I don't know if I got to put bollards up there if this becomes worse, but, you know, this really needs to be thoroughly vetted before we go further. That's just my personal opinion, I'm not telling anybody what to do, but you know what? I live there. And I'm hearing a lot of things that just aren't true, and they can say what they want to say within the theoretical world, but when you come to our street, you can actually see these things happening. So I apologize if my tone is a little excitable, but again, that's my home, and that's my family. Phil's got little kids, Jack's got kids and grandkids, and we're just looking out for our families. And that's all I have to say.
Good evening. Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. If you would please state your names, spell your last, and provide your address.
Philip B.A.V.A.R.O., Bavaro. I live at 74 East Pleasant Grove Road. I live right next door to this property, on the left-hand side. I have a couple of concerns about this. Okay, so apparently on my side, I'm going to get the driveway. Is that correct? To the left of this Keebler property? So my concern is, how close is that going to be to my property line? My children, my two little boys play football, soccer, baseball, in my backyard, in my front yard, right next to this property, not far from where the driveway is allegedly going to be. Also, my dog plays with them, you know? Sounds silly, but worried that someone's going to pull in or Amazon, UPS, if it's too close to my property, and run them over. This property is non-conforming in five different ways, which you guys know that. And it's, they, I've noticed that they said that nobody had called them to, asked to buy that property. When they reached out to me with a letter, that's not true. I made three phone calls to the attorney's office, okay? I don't remember exactly who I spoke to. When I got the first letter back in August of 2023, I made a call immediately, and I offered to buy this property. And I was told, the second time I called, that the only way that this property would be sold to me is that if it was sold with a variance, that a home could be built there. I had bought my property from the Keebler people, the Keebler family, who owns this property, who set up this division this way. Until they owned my home, when I bought it from them three years ago, and when I bought it from them, my real estate agent told me that they own the property next to it, they don't want to develop it, they don't want to develop it, they want to keep it private. It was private all this time. They live in Florida. And now they want to develop this property? You know, it's, it's going to affect my life and my children's life. They want to build a tremendous home there. My home is 2,800 square feet. I have a basement, and yes, my basement does flood. My house was built in 1988, and my house does not sit 57 feet from the road, it sits more like 70 feet from the road. And there is a massive flooding problem. There's water on the front lawn of my house, on Jack's house. Jack actually has to park on the street. When he has guests, they have to park on the street, they can't even pull into his driveway. There's also plenty of water that's situated and stuck constantly, like, like a swampy area on that Keebler property. It's less than, it's about maybe 100 and 101 feet frontage. I have 180 feet frontage. I mean, you know, it's going to affect my life. When you pull in the driveway, I'm, I'm going to see the lights now, right? Because it's going to go, my son's bedroom, I have, I sent in a picture, I don't know if you guys could find it, of my son's bedroom, and it's, when they, when they pull up, you're going to, the lights are going to be right there when it turns around to my son's bedroom. I don't, you know, how are they going to turn around on that property without Jack getting the lights or me? And then am I going to get the water on my side of the property when they start to build? How, who's going to guarantee me that I'm not going to get all that water runoff now on my property? That's all I'm asking you guys as, as the board. I appreciate you guys being here, to just do your job, you know, and protect me, as well as you're trying to protect Mr. Keebler, I understand that, but he, he doesn't have a hardship, because again, he wanted the property left this way, so he could deal and have the most property that he could have when he had my lot, he owned Mr. DeProssimo's lot as well. He had all these things subdivided years ago. And now he just wants to sell it for as much as he can. I offered to buy it for him, he won't sell it to me again unless I bought it with a variance and a plan to it. So what they said is not accurate, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming forward, we appreciate it.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. If you would please, if, first of all, can you lower the microphone a little bit? Thank you. And if you would please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address.
My name is Mrs. Janine Spedalieri Skrotzky, S.P.E.D.A.L.I.E.R.E. Last name is S.K.R.O., C as in cat, Z as in zebra, K.Y. I live in 84 East Pleasant Grove Road, so I do live in the house that's going to be adjacent to the bushes. Now, you would ask my husband a couple of questions. my husband a couple of questions, and I think my husband was very nervous and wasn't able to answer some of the questions you asked. That puddle that you inquired about was actually taken about, probably about four or five weeks ago, because if you had looked at the picture, you would have seen there was a gingerbread at the end of my driveway. So that was Christmas time. And as far as what it takes to make that puddle, it only takes maybe about, I'd say eighteen to twenty-four hours' worth of rain to do that. And when my children were growing up, yes, we did have that puddle, but my children could walk across the front lawn. And in that same picture, you saw a car, that was my car, that I parked out on the street. I had to walk all the way around toward my neighbor, my new neighbor's property, who lives in ninety-four East Pleasant Grove Road, so that I could get back into my home. And I still walked through my puddle even after I walked around. And there was one other question you had asked my husband. And you had asked, if we were the owners of that property, what would we have done in that instance? We would have been honest in the fact that we owned that property. We probably also would have included that in the sale of the home, as opposed to stating that it was an unbuildable lot. And the Keebler, Keebler, I should say, Mrs. Jennifer Keebler Barnes and her husband Van Barnes, they did own seventy-four East Pleasant Grove Road, they did own Joe's property. Now, from what my understanding is, and it is hearsay, Joe did offer to buy that property. So we, multiple people have offered to buy that property prior to them selling, because Van still lived in that house when Joe had bought that property. And one last final thing, I have always taught my children, I raised four children, and I taught them that we have rules for a reason. And when we make the rules, we are supposed to follow the rules, not bend the rules. So my husband is correct. When we moved in in nineteen ninety-nine, we'll be Jackson residents for twenty-five years come August, it was an R-one zone, and it could have been sold at that time. And he also is correct in the fact that it was turned into a three-acre zone. So I do feel that, not for my privacy, but just for the sake of the rules, that the rules should be followed. And quite honestly, I really would like to be able to keep my windows open, since you did all see that I have very large windows. They're probably about five feet by five feet. So there's really no way of me not seeing this home. And I'm not gonna go to the expense and make smaller windows in my octagon family room. So as everybody asked, we would like you to look out for us. We've lived, especially myself, I've lived here for twenty-five years, and I would like to remain a Jackson resident and leave when I am ready to leave. Because if my home is infringed upon, and as my husband said, we did consult a Realtor, the marketability of my home will be affected. Because if people are looking for a home that has a buffer, they're not gonna want to buy my home. Because quite honestly, they're trying to say that it fits with the aesthetic of the neighborhood. It absolutely does not. We do not have homes sandwiched in between each other. That house is gonna be sandwiched in in a development-like situation. And as my husband said, if we wanted to live in a development, well, then we would have stayed in Atlantic Highlands where we moved from, where houses were right one on top of one another. So I hope that you will make the right decision. As you make this decision, think about if it was you, and it was your home, and you were living there, and how you would want to live in your neighborhood. And I thank you for your time.
Correct. We sent the buy cell, buy cell letters twice, once in September of last year and once in November, I'm sorry, once in August of last year and once in November of last year. We have not received any response, written emails, letters, phone calls whatsoever, nor has our client informed us that he's been contacted with any offers. We have no knowledge of any response, and our office certainly did not receive any, anything.
Sorry, Mr. Bavaro, I wanna make sure I have the right last name, Mr. Bavaro?
So is this gentleman calling me a liar? Because I called multiple times, and I was told, and I quote, "The property will not be sold unless it gets a variance." First time. Second time, I was told the same thing. The third time, his father told me that the only reason why they sent the letter out is because by law, they had to. That's all I can say. And I'm not a liar.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you for coming forward.
Madam Chair, lady, question?
Yes, Mr. Hurley.
Mr. Pape, when you sent out the letters to the adjoining property owners, the two on, one on each side, who were they to respond to?
I signed the letters. They were to respond to me and our office. I provided my office phone number, email address, and office mailing address.
Mr. Bavaro, to whom did you respond?
I called the gentleman's office in August, and I don't remember if it was, I spoke to a secretary or someone in the office, and I said that I wanted to buy the property. And I was told, and I was instructed, that the only way the property will be sold is if a variance was granted. And then I called back again. Later on, the same thing I was told by his dad, I believe was also an attorney. He said that the letters legally had to be sent out for whatever legal mumbo jumbo there is. And that's, I just raised my hand, I offered to buy the property. And like I said, I bought the house, seventy-four East Pleasant Grove Road, from Mr. William Barnes, and he told me, and I quote, "That that's private. That's why we kept it that way, and we're not, we're not looking to sell it. It's private." Mr. De Prossimo, he offered to buy it before I even moved there, he was told no. So this is why to, what's your name, sir? I'm sorry, I can't see.
Hurley.
Mr. Hurley, no disrespect to you, sir, but when you said that people have the right to sell their property and build on it if they want to, and I respect that, and you are absolutely right. But this is a money grab here. This is not like Mr. De Prossimo said. It's not like somebody wants to build a home on it for their family. We don't know who, which size home is gonna go there.
Well, we've heard your argument. My question is, are you willing to purchase that property?
I was, I am willing to purchase that property as it stands now. I cannot afford to buy the property, its variance is granted, because it's gonna drastically increase the price, which is the point.
Well, okay.
If you understand what I'm trying to say.
Oh, I fully understand it. The problem is that...
That's all I meant by that. No disrespect to anyone on the board.
If we, let me, let me say one thing, and ask the attorney, and any attorney here, Mr. Pape included, correct me if I'm wrong. But if we denied this application, it's considered something like a constructive condemnation, okay? What that means is that in order to purchase the property, or if the town was to buy it, it would have to be valued at the market value, which includes assuming a variance was granted. So it sounds to me, when you said you called the office, it sounds to me like you did get a legal response from the office, so you must have contacted the office. Now, Mr. Pape has indicated that they didn't get any response, so we have a bit of a problem here. It does sound as if you got a legal response.
Well, to all due respect, I'm not an attorney. I don't know what a legal response is. I had no idea. As far as I know, is, to me, it looked like an unbuildable lot.
What I mean is, you got a response from a lawyer.
Oh, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. And the reason why...
From a law office, anyway.
Right. I offered to buy it because I didn't want this to be developed, you know, I would just hold it and keep it, and then maintain the property. That's all.
So, so just from a legal perspective, Mr. Hurley is correct. If the board were to deny the request to build on this undersized lot, it would essentially be inverse condemnation, which means that there would potentially be a cause of action against the township for condemnation of a property through other means than eminent domain, which, you know, creates a problem for the township. These undersized lot cases are difficult, because again, if these variances aren't granted, it essentially, essentially the property becomes useless. And so, so that's something that case law directs us to avoid. What I can say is that from a purchasing perspective, it would need to be at the fair market value rate, presuming that a variance were granted on this property.
Right. I just found, I found it, and I took it, because I didn't know of the legal aspect of it.
Right. Understood.
So when I was told that, I took it as it was a money grant, as you could obviously understand. I'm a layman, I'm not an attorney.
Of course.
I'm an old concrete worker, you know what I mean?
That's all I'm trying, I'm just trying to explain it.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that to me.
I'm not trying to...
Yeah. But when I heard that, I kinda got angry. I was hurt, because I felt like it was, like I said, a money grab. And he owned Mr. De Prossimo's property, he owned my property, he owned that piece of land, and developed it that way, so he would have his privacy. But now he's gone, and now he doesn't want me to have privacy, because he wants the money. Nothing further, I'm sorry.
One further que, sir, who owned the property?
Keebler Trust, which is, owned my house, seventy-four East Pleasant Grove, owned Mr. De Prossimo's house. He owned all those three lots. His family trust owned half of the neighborhood. They owned a general store down the block, from what I understand. Their history goes deep into the town. I even think their name is on this building, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken.
But just for clarification, this was as a result of the subdivision, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, board.
I can just make one statement. It sounds like there was a phone call made to our office back in August after we sent those letters. I was not aware of that phone call. Perhaps it was responded to by someone else in our office. At the last hearing in October, there was a statement made that a member of the public had reached out to our office in response to those letters, and had not received a response from our office. For that reason, we resent the letters in November. I included my personal email, our office phone number and address was on there. And to my knowledge, no one in our office, and I certainly have not received any response to the letters that were sent in November.
Sounds like you spoke, I mean, again, it sounds like Mr. Bavaro just testified he spoke to your father.
Yeah, so someone's not telling the truth here, and I know it's not me. So he's testifying the fact that no one contacted them, so he's calling me a liar, and I take offense to that.
Again, I don't know that he's calling, and I'm not...
Come on, let's be honest, gold spade a spade here. Come on. I don't know this mumbo jumbo. I'm from Brooklyn. I grew up in the streets, you know what I'm saying?
I think, I think there may be some, I'm gonna chalk it up to miscommunication here.
I'm chalk it up to, no disrespect, but all attorneys are liars. I'm sorry, but it's just, you know.
No offense taken. Good evening.
Sean Kelly, one fifteen East Fish Road.
I just need to swear again. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And just for our record keeper, could you just repeat your name, spell your last, and provide your address?
Sean Kelly, K E L O Y, one fifteen East Fish Road, Jackson. I'm the adjacent lot to the backside of the property. That property, my property, has a lake on it from those properties forever. That property is just water soluble. There's water on it right now. I got pictures of it on my phone, but I didn't print them out. When I built my house, ninety-five, I did a perk test. One foot down, you hit water. So I don't know, I don't know how to get eighty inches if I'm the adjacent property. And I put my house right on top of the ground, because I couldn't dig down. And that, if you take out the trees, the water there is gonna be even worse, of course. And you drive by my house right now, the snow doesn't, doesn't even keep up with the, with the water. It's like, and then four variances. I could see one variance, two, four variances, and this guy doesn't even, he's not even building a house for himself. He's just shoving it, you know, for everybody else. But that's all I got to say.
Yes, we, we think that the plan that's presented before you this evening is a reasonable plan. And what I mean by that is, this lot is, it's impossible to develop this lot. Over the course of the past two years, we've worked with your professionals and the board members to take in all the feedback we received and incorporate all that feedback into the plan that's presented here this evening. And I'll reiterate that the applicant has committed to providing fully engineered drawings as part of resolution compliance, which will address the concerns that you heard about drainage and a proper stormwater management system, and addressing all of the necessary outside agency approvals. So with all that, we would ask the board to vote favorably this evening.
Mr. Houdak?
In your professional opinion, okay, we were presented with a substantial building that's going in on this piece of property that's over four thousand square feet. In your opinion, is there any way a home could be built on this property? Of course, it would be substantially smaller, but it would probably fit more into the neighboring homes. So is it possible?
So the setback requirements for the R-three zone do leave just about zero opportunity for a building within that width, right? So nothing conforming to the R-three standards can be built on this lot. That's why they're here, for, because of the lot width. Could they build a smaller home? Sure. It'd be, it'd still be non-conforming. The footprint is only twenty-four hundred square foot, not four thousand. The footprint is twenty-four hundred. It's forty by sixty, forty feet wide, sixty deep. The applicant is not requesting, we, and I think a lot of the board members have heard me say this, some of the newer ones have not, our ordinance does not have anything in the residential zone, any of the residential zones, that limits the size or living area of a home. We don't. That's called the floor area ratio. Many ordinances throughout other towns and throughout the state, they have those requirements. They say, if you're on an undersized lot, or if you're on a lot in a zone, the floor area ratio should be ten percent, no more than ten percent of the lot area. We don't have anything like that here, so we have to make subjective calls, or you have to make subjective determinations based on the, what's nearby and what has been built. What we do have in our ordinance, though, is an impervious cover requirement. They can't exceed X amount or X percentage of impervious cover based on the lot area. They're not asking for a variance from that. They're under the impervious cover requirement. We also have a building coverage requirement that says can't be any more than, I'm gonna throw a number out there, twenty-five percent of the lot area. Well, they don't exceed that in this case, they're not asking for a variance. Those are the two, those are the only two lot usage intent, lot, lot usage intensity type requirements we have in our ordinance. I can't, as an engineer, tell you, I don't have an opinion on whether or not the house is too big for the neighborhood. I can tell you from an engineering perspective, the drywall system can be designed accordingly to accommodate the roof runoff. The, the grading of the lot can be, can be completed in a way that does not adversely impact the adjacent neighbors, or exasperate any drainage conditions that may or may not exist out in the road, right? So, but those typically don't have much to do with the size of the dwelling, overall size. This is a twenty-four hundred square foot footprint with a detached garage. Right?
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might, I just, I feel compelled to follow up on Mr. Hudak's, um, question. The applicant's requested four variances and a plan that I think only requires three variances. The first two variances are for lot area and lot width. Those are existing non-conforming. They've asked people around them if they wanted to sell property, no one wants to sell them property. They've offered to sell this lot to other people, and we've had the conversation about what the fair market value is. But the minimum lot area, minimum lot width are existing conditions. They have two ways of changing it, asking people to sell them land, or physically getting rid of the property. Neither of those is available. So I think the board, um, has to see that those variances as pre-existing conditions are reasonable. As it relates to the, um, the minimum side yard setback of fifty feet, the property's a hundred foot wide, one fifty-foot setback, a second fifty-foot setback, there's no building envelope. So unless we want to buy the property or, or create an inutility of the property, the side yard setback variance seems reasonable. Then we get into how big the house is within that setback. The fourth variance was for the front yard setback. One plan requests, um, sixty or sixty-five feet where eighty's required, and the other one is conforming. That straightforward C-variance testimony improves. As it relates to the size of the building, there is actually in the R-three zone require, R-three zone standards for principal buildings, a maximum building coverage, which includes all the principal and accessory buildings, and that's fifteen percent of the lot. They're at five percent. So I wanted to make sure at least the record was clear of what's, what's physically in our report, the testimony that Mr. Higgins gave, and sort of a summary of where I think we are with the first three variances. The first three variances, if they weren't granted, would put the property into inutility. The fourth variance about the setback, you have some discretion over. As it relates to the variance for the side yard setback, that goes to your point, Mr. Hudak, of how wide the building should be, or how big the building should be. So I wanted to make sure that I was just, we were clear on those parameters for the four variances that were being requested this evening. Thank you.
But it's, it's my understanding that this Keebler family trust, they owned all of these properties. And years ago, they applied for, um, they divided up this property into all of these slices. And they're the ones that created this issue with a small...
Well, I'm not sure, I, I, I will not testify for the applicant.
Okay.
I will offer you what I think I heard the applicant say. In nineteen eighty-seven, when this property was subdivided, it was conforming. After nineteen eighty-seven, and I think it was probably around two thousand five or six, the municipality rezoned the property and made these lots non-conforming. So I do not believe it was an action of the applicant, of the owner that created the non-conformity. It was an action of the governing body that created the non-conformity.
At that time, I understand that the rules changed and it got, um...
The owner of the property had from nineteen eighty-seven until the property was rezoned to have it as a conforming lot, yes.
But in nineteen eighty-seven, or prior to nineteen eighty-seven, this person divided up this property to maximize their profits at that time. It's only that afterwards, the township rezoned that area to three acres, and here we are.
They already have a non-conforming lot, correct?
Just for the purposes of the record, there's nothing that prevents a, an application for a subdivision on property that's commonly owned. And if the subdivision is granted, we're stuck with what the subdivision has been, what, what has been subdivided, is how I'll put it.
And I like, just, just for the record, so the record's clear on this, on this point. This was a planning board application, so it was a fully conforming subdivision at that time. Right, the applicant wasn't asking for any relief from the subdivision standards or zoning standards at that time. So they did everything that the law allowed them to do. It's, it's up to you to determine if the hardship was that, you know, like, fifteen years later or so, the governing body changed the zone to create the hardship.
It's a chocolate mess.
Any of us in this room have created, by the way, but it's one that you have to deliberate on. Through the chair?
A couple of thoughts, Madam Chair lady. So the, one of the rubrics that, that runs through our evaluation process is, can a variance be granted without substantial detriment to the public good? So right now, that's the one that's in my head the most. On top of the fact, what was just placed on the record about it, uh, being zoned, not by, the zoning being changed by the township. What has the applicant done? He's turned the house, I, I, I think that's a step in the right direction. He's put the driveway on the left-hand side, I think that's a step in the right direction. In terms of trying to ameliorate, the lights going into his neighbor to the right, they, they proposed two rows of staggering evergreen trees, I believe, and Heaven chatting with them. He's willing to put up a fence, I forgot exactly where, but someplace that would prevent the light from coming through and shining into the neighbor's house. A question arose as to whether or not the, uh, the first application, which would put that front setback at sixty-five feet as opposed to the alternate A, which would put it at eighty-one feet, would be better or worse. At least it appears to me that alternate A would be the better choice because it pushes the house back farther. At sixty-five, the house would be up too close, those lights would have more of a direct line into the existing dwelling immediately to the right. So it seems to me that alternate A is better, and it also then makes that minimum front yard setback conforming at eighty-one feet. So they have, they have done things to ameliorate the concept of substantial damage to the public good, and I am focusing right now on their neighbors. Uh, the other, the other issue in ter, in terms of the neighborhood, actually you have a little bit of a mix in terms of where the house should be placed off the roadway. The property to the left is about fifty-nine, the property to the right is about a hundred and twenty-three feet back. Again, I, I think there's enough to, uh, to compel alternate A as being the better choice of placement of the property. All right, now, what am I having a problem with? I'm having a problem with the flooding. Now, unfortunately, I haven't heard any evidence that would indicate that this property is the cause of the flooding. If it was, maybe there's something that we could have a conversation about. I haven't heard any evidence that all the flooding along that road, and I drove the road too, and we've had a wet, we've had some wet months, and it's, it's wet out there, it's wet along that road. Uh, I don't know if, if that's a problem that we can make the applicants. And there's a part of me that wants to make that their problem. How can, and perhaps we can make a condition to this approval, that they have all of that appropriate evaluated, have the engineering done, have drains put in, but I don't know if we're, if we are permitted, I'm gonna need counsel to weigh in on this, I'll need our, our professionals to weigh in on this, to make that a condition of approval. I've, I have a recollection someplace that imposing offsite, offsite conditions is an approval of, of an application, a problem, but I'll need some further feedback on that. So I really don't know how to treat the flooding as much as I would like to make that their problem. Those are my thoughts. Otherwise, I think, um, you gotta approve the application for the reasons that have already been stated for the record. Those are my thoughts.
Madam Chair Lady, may I? I've, I've listened to the, um, analysis by, by Mr. Book, and I agree with it one hundred percent. That does not mean that we haven't heard the problems of the property owners. There is obviously a, a flooding problem there. The, the, the approach that this board has to take is not to fix the, the flooding problem. The board, the board's obligation is to make sure that this development doesn't increase that type of condition. One of the, um, let me go back a step. Mr. Higgins testified as to what the, what the burden of proof is on an applicant. And this is a, this is a C-variance or a bulk-type variance. Bulk variances relate to the front yard setbacks, the side yard setbacks, the lot area, and that's exactly what we're talking about here. It is a situation that, at least it's clear to me, that because of the existing size of this lot, which this board had, had nothing to do with, it may have been the, the original owner who got the subdivision, but it was permitted at the time it got the subdivision, that it conformed at the time it got the subdivision, and now it does not conform. And what I indicated earlier is that if we denied this application for an undersized lot, where a denial means you can't build anything there based on the width of that lot and the side yard requirements, I think Mr. Higgins said you can't even put a tennis ball on there. Excuse me. So it, it creates a problem for this board. We have to look at it two ways. Number one, are they entitled to the variance based on a hardship? Or number two, are they entitled to a, a variance because the benefit of the application exceeds any detriment to the application? Now, Mr. Higgins testified that a, the benefit to, to be derived here exceeds any, any detriment, any detriment would not be substantial, which is required under the law. If I don't accept that testimony, I still have to look at whether or not, based on Mr. Higgins' testimony, that this is a hardship. And it is clearly a hardship. One of the gentlemen came over who started talking about the purposes of zoning, and mentioned to us, you know, one of the purposes of zoning is to avoid flooding. That's true. The problem here is that when the board looks at the, the purposes of zoning, the obligation of the applicant is to show one is satisfied. Not that one is not satisfied, they only have to show one is satisfied. I think Mr. Higgins' testimony indicated that. I also indicated earlier that if we denied an application of this nature where it results in a piece of property that is inutility, you can't build on it, it would be considered a condemnation by the municipality's action. We are part of this municipality. And you would have to determine the value based on the fair market value as if the variance had been granted. And that's a problem, because one of the people who came in who talked about buying the property says, "Well, the variance enhances the value of the property." Well, yeah, it does, but we can't do anything about that. So that's, that's a problem. I, I, I hear the, the complaints about the flooding. All we can do, the very best we can do, is rely on our engineer to tell us that what is being proposed doesn't make the, the stormwater situation any worse, that it's being controlled because, at least from this development of this piece of property, which apparently it is. I was concerned about the, 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 um, the grades that are proposed in the front yard. I'm satisfied that our engineer can look at that and make a determination. We're not engineers here, you know, we rely on our experts. He can make a determination that, uh, the grades that are being proposed are not going to have a negative impact on the adjoining properties. That's what I wanted to hear, that's what I want our engineer to determine. So based on all of that, I don't think we really have any choice here. We can't fix the, we can't fix the flooding problem. That's not anything that we're authorized to, we can't do it. So based on the comments that, that Mr. Book had mentioned, I agree wholeheartedly. I think at least a C-one variance, which is a hardship variance, has been, has been demonstrated, and the applicant is entitled to it, to its, um, variance. What I conceive may have happened in the past is all of these lots were created, the seller or the owner at the time may have joined some of these lots together to make them a little bigger. That doesn't require a subdivision, to my understanding, and they can do that consensually so long as they comply. So whatever they did, they did. We, and what we're left with is this one narrow lot. And as indicated to one of the people who discussed it, "How would you feel if this was your lot, and it was narrow, and we told you, you can't build on it? You can't do anything." You know, it, it's, that's the situation we're confronted with. So I would have to agree with Mr. Book that, I think at least on a C-one approach, that the variance has, the applicant has met its burden.
Just, yeah, just to, um, address the, uh, the condition proposed by Mr. Book, I don't believe the board has the jurisdiction to require the applicant to investigate the cause of the flooding, or to, 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 um, to necessarily alleviate, necessarily alleviate the cause of the flooding, specifically of the lots, not the cause. What, what, uh, what has been already agreed to by the applicant is that fully engineered plans will be submitted as a condition of the approval of this application. And those fully engineered plans should conform with all applicable ordinances and state laws regarding stormwater management. And, and as Mr. Hill has previously indicated, the applicant has a duty under the law to ensure that the flooding and, and, and those conditions are not exacerbated in any form. But I don't believe that this board can condition the investigation of the cause of the flooding on this applicant.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with what Ryan just said. We, we'll make, we will make sure through sound engineering that they don't exasperate any stormwater runoff into the road beyond which already exists. In fact, in mo, it's my opinion that they'll be able to reduce the stormwater runoff that goes into the road with this development because of the use of the dry wells. But it's, and we'll also make sure that any stormwater runoff from the road that enters this property will continue to allow to enter the property, so therefore they're not going to dam it off and let it, and let the problem go further on down the road, right? So we've seen that situation in a, in a couple other instances of isolated lots where we wanted that stormwater runoff that flowed onto that property to continue to flow and let them manage that aspect of it on their own. That's their responsibility. So, um, now, this, there's nothing unique here that we haven't seen before. And, you know, we can, we can make sure during a fully engineered plan of resolution compliance that all of your concerns are addressed.
I also agree with Mr. Book as far as the variance sketch alternate A. I do think that we need to, uh, go with that one as, in regard, in comparison to the other. Mr. Peters made a great point, these, these non-conformities were existing in no, at no fault of the property owner. I sympathize with the neighbors. Mrs. Skroski, you asked, what would, how would I feel if that was my property? I sympathize with all of you, I, it's a tough situation.
Mr. Hudak is correct when he said that this is the name of the law.
Okay, but... I understand that, but, ma'am. Excuse me, excuse me, I understand what you're saying, however, it really is not their fault. In nineteen eighty-seven, when the property was subdivided, it was a one acre minimum, and they met that requirement. This was not, excuse me, this is not, we have to be realistic here, this is not their fault. The original situation in nineteen eighty-seven, when they did this, they met the requirements. Sixteen years later, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Pape said, sixteen years later, the town changed the zoning. Right? So I understand what you're saying, but we, we have to look at the facts as they are. Mr. Peters made a great point, these non-conformities are not the fault of the property owner. That being said, like I said, I do think we go with, we, if we are to approve this, I think that any, um, any, it should include variance sketch alternate A. And that, again, minimizes the number of variances that are needed. I would like to also discuss, Mr. Bavaro mentioned about his young children. We discussed on the young, the other side of the property, Mr. Pape, about the trees and the fence. Right? And the, the neighbor to that side said that he wanted the trees outside of the fence. Is a fence on the other side something that can be considered, given the situation here with the property? Is, is that something that you guys would be willing to consider? That's my one question. And then, uh, again, we can... And then, again, we cannot hold this property as responsible for the flooding. It is a very tough situation. I've been in Jackson for many, many years. I've been out on that road plenty of times. I do agree, there's definitely an issue there. But we can't prove that it's this lot that has caused this problem. No, no, we can observe it, but we can't prove that it's this lot.
Madam Chair, there will be no more outbursts from the public. None, zero. You've had the opportunity to speak. The board is deliberating. Testimony is closed. This is a public government meeting. It's disrespectful. Please don't do it again.
So again, back to what Mr. Book said, I'd have to agree. We can't prove that this lot is what is causing the problems. And this is where we, again, have to rely on our experts. And Mr. Hill, I have to take your testimony at its face value that as the town engineer, you're stating that whatever the issues are, this will not exacerbate the problem. It may not fix the problem, but it will not exacerbate the problem. And that's what's required by the MUL.
I did just want to address for the concerns regarding the outside agency approvals, I want to make it clear that every single resolution that this board adopts conditions each and every approval on the receipt of all necessary outside agency approvals. So all of those approvals that were waived to come before the board, which is not uncommon, usually this board is the first stop, not the last stop, those approvals must be received in order to proceed. And if they cannot be obtained, then the approvals essentially null and void.
If there's nothing further from the board, I'll make a motion to approve the application based upon the comments placed upon the record of C1 hardship variance with alternate Plan A in accordance with our 12723 engineering drawing and with all stipulations and representations that have been placed upon the record by the applicant.
Hold on one second. There's a motion on the floor, but Ms. Bradley, Chairwoman Bradley, had asked the applicant about the fence on the left side of the property. I think we should get a response from Mr. Pape about that.
The applicant would be agreeable to a fence for buffering purposes. I mean, the lot is some 600 feet deep, so I anticipate that any buffer would just be for the purpose of creating a buffer between the two, limited to the creating a buffer between the two properties.
So just for clarification, anything forward of the house would have to be four foot high open fence. Anything beyond or behind the front of the house can then be six foot high solid or four foot solid. But anything forward of the house, four foot open. That's it. That's all that's allowed.
Understood. The applicant's willing to install a fence that complies with the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's okay. I made the motion again, only this time with your fence as being part of the overall motion.
I'll second the motion with the fence and all the other stipulation.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith?
No.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Mr. Houdak?
I'd love to vote with my heart, but I can't. I have to go with the law, so I have to vote yes.
Ms. Parnas?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Our next applicant is Crown Castle. We're going to take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back.
Thank you for allowing us our recess. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Mr. Murphy?
Madam Chair, we're going to, due to the hour, we are going to carry application number four. Mr. Alfieri, if you want to put your appearance on the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant, the adventure crossing application, which we're not going to reach tonight, we're going to request be carried, I think, to March 6th. And we would, if an extension is required, we certainly grant the Board the extension.
Thank you.
And we'd request, if possible, we could get the beginning of the agenda, rather than the end, if possible. Thank you.
I do have the March 6th one. Everything else is a first listing, aside from Rosenblum, which we carried earlier this evening.
You don't have to promise me tonight. That's okay.
I will give you number two on the March 6th agenda. Fair?
Fine, thank you.
Application number four, Cardinali and Jackson Crossing Two, Adventure Crossing, Block Three, Zero, Zero, One, Lot Two, Three, and Four, amended final site plan seven, seven, six, dash, six. This application is going to be carried to the March 6th, 2024, Meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment as application number two. No further notice will be required. In pursuant to the representation on the record, the applicant has waived time through that date.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Alfieri. Take care.
We're going to move on to applicant number three, Crown Castle Fiber LLC. This is preliminary and final site plan eight, six, seven, with use variance three, four, eight, five. Mr. parchment?
Madam Chair, I'm Parcher from Norris McLaughlin. On behalf of Crown Castle Fiber, I would first like to start and confirm that the Board has jurisdiction. Proof of notice was filed with the Board's secretary as satisfactory. Yeah, today we're seeking the use variance, preliminary and final major site plan, consisting of installation of telecommunications distributed antenna system, consisting of eighteen nodes within the Six Flags Square adventure property. Today I have three witnesses here for you today on behalf of this application. I'd first like to start with Peter Lutis. I will ask that the Board's qualify and swear in the witness.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the Board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. If you would please state your names, provide your affiliation and your credentials, please.
Yes, my name is Peter Lutis with NVNC. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. Earned my bachelor's of science from Duke University, two thousand and eight. Been a professional licensed engineer since two thousand and fourteen. I've been practicing professional engineering in the telecommunications industry for the last eight point seven five years. And I've testified at boards of this nature in the state of New Jersey dozens of times.
So we accept, does the Board accept your credentials? Thank you.
Thank you.
First, Pete, Mr. Lutis, was this, were the plans submitted to the Board prepared by your firm?
Yes, they were.
Using the plans and based upon your expertise, please describe the project from your civil engineering viewpoint, including design waivers being sought.
Yes. Crown Castle is proposing to install eighteen poles supporting telecommunications equipment in the Six Flags Park property in Jackson Township. Those eighteen poles are proposed to be thirty-two foot approximately tall, I believe thirty-two, thirty-two, thirty-six, I'm sorry, thirty-six foot, two and a half inches tall total above ground. They will support telecommunications equipment distributed throughout the park to improve cell service for the parkgoers. As part of the project as well, Crown Castle is proposing to install fiber in either proposed conduit or existing conduit to serve as backhaul to the existing node, or the proposed node locations, as well as provide power from adjacent locations to the proposed pole locations. I do have a couple of exhibits here. I believe there were multiple sets of plans provided to the Board. This exhibit is sheet three of forty of the fiber utility plan entitled Key Map. It shows an overview of the park map and all the different node locations that are proposed throughout the park property. The RF engineer from Crown Castle can speak to the RF design, but that shows the physical layout of the eighteen node locations, as well as the fiber pathways. As I mentioned, there'll be some new conduit proposed in trench and then backfilled and restored to existing conditions, as well as pulling fiber through existing conduit that the park facility had installed previously. And that is the overall nature of the project.
Are you familiar with the Township's planners' report of January ninth, twenty twenty-four?
Yes, I have read the planner's report.
Are there any issues raised in the review letter which you would like to address?
Yes, there were a few design items that were raised in the planner's report. Number one, the fall zone requirement. They proposed pole locations are all exceeding that required setback of one and a half times the proposed structure height from any property lines. Number two, the fence requirements for these telecom installations. You know, my interpretation and my experience on these types of designs would lead me to the conclusion that the zoning ordinance was drafted with more of a macro tower in mind, as opposed to the proposed small cell facilities. Typically, for a small cell pole structure deployed in this nature, a fence and/or landscape buffers would not really comport with the proposed installation, the aesthetics of the installation. It would just really, from a design perspective, seem a little bit out of place in the context of a freestanding pole that is more like a light standard, as opposed to a telecommunications tower, monopole, or structure of that nature. I believe those are the main points that were raised in the planner's report, but I am certainly able to speak to any other questions or comments that may pertain as well.
Are you familiar with the engineer's report of January twelfth, twenty twenty-four?
Yes, I am familiar with the engineer's report as well. There are a couple of comments there, a couple of plan revisions that can certainly be addressed. There was question about environmental permitting for which the proposed trenching, proposed utility conduit will be installed. Trenches backfilled and restored to previous condition. All plan updates and notes required there can be added. I cannot really speak to the timing of other tenants being added to these poles, but that can be addressed by others on this, on this team, I believe. And again, if there are any other specific concerns that need to be raised here, happy to address as well.
I would like to tell the Board I have no further questions for this witness. Does the Board have any questions?
Do we have any questions for this witness? Mr. Hill?
So I just want to clarify that, based on our comments, and there's not many of them, to be honest with you, in our letter, you don't take exception to any of those?
No.
Okay. I did, I'd want to, I did want a little bit of testimony on the record as far as how you're going to segregate the construction activities from the general public. Are you proposing a construction laydown yard that's fenced and secured and isolated from the general public? As you're constructing these improvements, is it segregated at all, or secured from the general public? So if you could provide some testimony along those lines, that would be helpful.
Sure. A project of this nature is fairly sprawling. The timing and staging and phasing of all of this build will certainly be contingent on construction management's plan and how they would approach that. From an engineering standpoint, we will support any and all efforts that are required to either design or help lay that out in terms of a site plan, phasing, staging, whatever may be required. Up until now, I do not believe, to my knowledge at least, that those discussions have been had in detail, but certainly something that we will support with the construction team throughout.
Yeah, I think from a, from an overall, like, if you are approved, and we go through the resolution compliance phase, not necessarily a phasing plan, but just showing like an equipment laydown, a storage yard, a contractor yard, and maybe some typical details on how you anticipate segregating the construction activities from the general public when the park is open.
Sure.
If you're going to use temporary construction fence and that kind of stuff, right?
To follow that up, also have, one of my clients from Crown Castle here from the construction, I can speak to that.
Okay. I don't know, I mean, if the Board wants more details on that, they can ask, but from my perspective, if we just show some basic information on the site plans for when you resubmit them, that would satisfy me. Understood?
Mr. Peters, do you have any questions or comments you want to make at this time? Thank you. You can call your next witness, sir.
Thank you so much. Can I now call Mr. Prashant Patel?
Excuse me, can I get a quick question in?
Forgive me, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Early.
Can you tell, this system, it's eighteen poles, it's a distributed antenna system. This is not, what are you serving here?
The RF engineer will be better equipped to explain that. From a civil engineering perspective, the poles will be located strategically in the park to provide service to the people that are at the park.
I also noticed in our planner's report that it appears that there is a Verizon shelter, that you're locating a shelter adjacent to it?
Yeah, there's an existing monopole, one hundred and fifty-foot macro monopole on site, and the Crown Castle hub is what it is referred to as to be placed adjacent to that site.
You can't utilize the Verizon pole?
There's nothing that's proposed up on the pole itself. It's real, it's just ground equipment for this, the purposes of this project for Crown Castle to serve the ODSAS network that is proposed.
Okay, so you have another expert that's going to discuss that?
Yeah.
The RF engineer will discuss the RF.
Thank you.
Components, yeah, thank you.
I would ask the Board to qualify and swear in this witness, who is actually RF engineer, Mr. Patel.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the Board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. If you would please state your name, provide your affiliation and credentials.
My name's Prashant Patel. I got my master's in telecommunications management from Stevens Institute in two thousand and eleven, and I've been working for Crown Castle since two thousand and fourteen, as an RF engineer. Thank you.
Mr. Patel, based on your expertise familiarity with the development application and the results of your EMF analysis, would you give your opinion to the, to the Board as to implications of this proposal?
I don't see any implications from EMF studies that were performed by third-party vendor. The stand-up distance at the ground level are zero feet, so anybody can stand below the site and they won't have EMF issues based on the FCC guidelines.
Can you speak to the general aspects of the telecommunications on the property?
Yeah, so this network has been developed for all the carriers, and one particular carrier in mind, so T-Mobile requested that they have, so Six Flags get a huge number of crowds on a daily basis because of the parkovers, and due to that, they were having capacity issues, which means that the number of users were more than what a site could handle. So they asked Crown Castle to develop.
Excuse me, sir, 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 sir. I know it's late, but I'm losing you a little bit. Can you keep that mic up a little closer?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. So, T-Mobile was asked to develop the ODSAS network for Crown Castle. Was, sorry, I just broke my thoughts. So T-Mobile asked Crown Castle to develop an ODSAS network in the park to handle the capacity issue, and that's when we came up with, based on the existing coverage, the number of users, and the requirements from T-Mobile, we came up with the ODSAS network for eighteen sites to provide adequate capacity at the water park and the main park at Six Flags.
Are you familiar with the Township Planner's Report of January ninth, twenty twenty-four?
Yes, I am.
Can you please give testimony to any issues raised in the review letter?
I didn't see any obvious issues pertaining to RF or the design, so.
How many carriers will there, will be able to accommodate on these poles?
So the poles were designed for multiple carriers, a minimum of three, a maximum of four.
I have no further questions for this witness. I allow the witness some question from the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. You're employed by Crown Castle, correct?
Yes.
And you, you're a radio frequency engineer?
That is correct.
Okay, so is Crown Castle providing the wireless telecommunications facilities, or are you providing the poles to a wireless telecommunications provider?
We are providing the poles and an infrastructure for the wireless carriers to connect their equipment, so that they can provide the services.
So I guess a question either to you, your attorney, or our attorney. So the folks who end up putting the equipment up on the poles, do we have that information? Will it be provided this evening?
Yes, we do have that information. What equipment would be deployed at each pole location?
Thank you. Just, just for the Board's background knowledge, we've, we've, we've heard telecommunications, wireless telecom facility applications before. We're all familiar with the monopole, right, which serve, which, you know, could be a hundred feet high with the antenna on it. The purpose of a distributed antenna system or a DAS system is to provide additional capacity. Mostly, it's a data issue. It's not, it's not, you can't get cellphone coverage. It's, it's data, providing data coverage, internet service, texting, that kind of stuff. It's the data service in large crowds. We see these types of systems in stadiums, indoor stadiums, outdoor stadiums, where you have large amounts of people congregating, and they're all on their phone at some point looking at something, and you need that data. So they'll use the existing infrastructure there as the backbone. That's the existing tower. And they distribute the data signals, or they'll distribute the antennas throughout a large area of congested, of congested people, so they all can grab some of that data, and they don't have to be right at that pole. That's the purpose of these systems. It's, it's very similar to, you know, it's, I'm sure they'll get into it, but safety of the general public and those kind of things, too. So that's what a DAS system is. It's a distributed antenna system.
Madam Chair, I guess I'm still confused. With the distributed antenna system that we're talking about here, and I'm, I read our planner's report, and it said something about optic fiber or fiber optic, whatever it may be. That's underground, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So this is not like a line-of-sight type of, of tower, is that correct?
Yes and no.
Yes and no.
So this site, since they are so much smaller in height, thirty-six feet only, they only have a limited coverage radius, so they only go eight hundred to a thousand feet far away from the pole, and that's why we need so many, because there's usually a huge congregation of parkovers in a particular spot, and that's why these locations have been selected based on that.
So have you done some kind of a survey that shows that there is a lack of service in the area?
Yes, we have done benchmark testing before designing this project.
So your testimony is there is a lack of service, and this is going to satisfy that lack of. lack of service?
There's not a lack of service, a lack of service in the sense that there are too many users for a given site. So, just to give you an example, in a Wi-Fi situation, if there are 10 users, you would get more downlink speeds or uplink speeds, but if you have 100 users, your speeds are going to get divided within the same thing. Or on a four-lane highway, if there's four cars, or the lanes are full, if there's one car, you have three lanes which are empty. So it's, how many users are using that network is what's causing the problem.
That's part of my question, is, are the 18 poles that you propose here, is that to serve the motoring public outside, excuse me, outside of the park?
No, this would only service all the people inside the park.
In the park?
Yes.
Is there an FCC license required here?
Each of the wireless service carriers have their own FCC license and spectrum license. Crown Castle is only providing them a space and a pole and a system that they can deploy their service.
So there may be users other than Verizon?
Yes.
Why couldn't they use Verizon's pole?
Which Verizon pole? The existing one?
I'm sorry? The question is, Verizon has a pole, I don't know how high it is, but they're over 100 feet, I think, right? Can these potential users utilize that pole and satisfy the same need?
So they have been using that pole to provide coverage up till now and moving forward for a couple days, but the problem is the number of users are more than what the site can handle.
Which is a capacity issue that you discussed.
Yeah, that's a capacity issue.
Can they increase anything on the existing pole to satisfy that capacity?
Not without adding more sites.
Without adding what?
Sites.
More sites?
Yeah.
So they would need other poles someplace?
Yes. And that's why this network has been designed.
Could they increase the height of the existing pole and satisfy that?
No, that wouldn't help either.
Why not?
Because increasing the height, you're still having the same coverage from the same site, it's.
So you got the coverage, but not the capacity?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. I would like to call my planner, Mr. Tim Kronk. I ask that the board swear in the next qualifying.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony, information, questions, and comments that you're about to present before the board? Be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Please state your names, provide your affiliation and your credentials.
Hello?
There we go.
My name's Timothy M. Kronk, K-R-O-N-K. Business address P.O. Box 465, Mendham, New Jersey, TK Design Associates. A bachelor of science from the University of Massachusetts. I have 33 years of land use experience predominantly in New Jersey. I am a New Jersey licensed professional planner and an AICP certified planner, and I have been accepted by this board, but I haven't been here in seven or eight years at least. Thank you.
Mr. Kronk, are you familiar with the development application before the board and a relief being requested?
Yes, I have reviewed the application and all of the plans as part of this, my review.
Are you familiar with the land use, the township's land use ordinance and the master plan?
Yes, I have reviewed the ordinance with specific attention to the wireless telecommunications sections, as well as the, as the master plan and the professional reviews.
Basically, expertise as a professional planner, you're familiar with the development application and the application provisions of the township, land use ordinance, and master plans. Have you formed an opinion as to the merits of the relief being requested by the applicant?
Yes, I have.
Would you please give the board your opinion?
Certainly. Subject application by Crown Castle is for 18 DAS nodes in the Six Flags Great Adventure Park. The portions of the park that the subject installations are proposed in are the CR-1, Commercial Recreation 1, Commercial Recreation 2, and Highway Commercial Zones. This property is 908.1 acres, and no portion of this application is located in the pine lands. The municipality has adopted, actually, I do, if I want to, actually, there were some questions about the visibility of this, I'd like to present this exhibit now, if I could. What exhibit? Are we on A1?
We will be on B1, the first one.
Sorry. I do have a photo simulation that I'd like to get passed around to the board, just so the board has a better understanding of the visibility in the context of the park itself. This is marked Exhibit A1. It is an exhibit board that has two photographs. Photo on the left is an existing conditions photo, and on the right is a computer simulation where we have inserted the proposed tower at the size, and location, and height of what all the 18 DAS nodes are proposed to look like. So photo on the left is the existing conditions photo. Photo on the right is where the, one of the DAS nodes has been inserted in there. I just wanted to give the board a better feel for what the structure looked like and how it fits in to the context of the park itself. Based upon the township's wireless telecommunications ordinance, the subject application will require relief in the nature of a D3 deviation variance. That's for a conditional use where not all the conditional use standards are met. As the board is aware, this is a fourth priority application. First priority would be existing towers. Second priority is new towers on municipal or agency-owned commercial properties. Third is existing buildings and commercial zones, and the fourth is new towers on lands not owned by the municipality or the MUA. So we do not meet the, the ownership criteria since the Six Flags property is located by a private entity. Also, based upon the application and the testimony of the civil engineer, we are looking to eliminate the landscape buffer requirement, which also would be a conditional use deviation. As the engineer testified, too, your ordinance does have a requirement for a 10-foot buffer eight feet high, and when you look at that photo simulation, you will see that that type of buffer is a buffer that's really geared more towards the tall monopole structures, 100, 150 feet, that have the big fenced-in compound and have multiple little shelters and equipment cabinets for multiple carriers in there. Perfect, you know, type of buffering for that situation, but as you can see, oh, thanks for putting that up, I didn't even see it. It's actually the next one, that's the existing conditions. The next one is the one that's the photo simulation, the 5B. Certainly, as you see this type of structure, that is something that is not needed for this type of installation. These poles are, you know, in paved areas, they're on the edge of paved areas, and some of them are in the, you know, the utility and maintenance yards as well. So really, none of those locations are locations that would require a heavy vegetated buffer at the base of the tower, you know, 10 feet wide in every direction. There's no equipment on the ground, so there's really nothing to hide. It's just that, that nice lamp pole type structure that will house the antennas of the FCC licensed carriers that would locate on this, on this property. As I mentioned, we do have the relief for the D3 deviation under the standards of Coventry Square versus Westwood. A strict application of the ordinance requirements would prevent this installation from being installed. Yes, it would, because this property is not owned by the municipalities or agencies. If we were forced into complying with the ordinance, we couldn't because it's privately held property. These installations are located in the center of the Six Flags property, and there's no way that they could be placed outside the park on a property that would meet the ordinance requirements. Also, the standard under Coventry Square is the fact that we do not meet a DV, a conditional use standard. Does the particular property remain suited? In this case, I certainly believe the site remains particularly suited for the wireless telecommunications use because the ownership of the land underneath really does not affect this application at all. I do believe the board can grant this variance without a substantial detriment to the public good. Quite the opposite, this is a, a use that does promote the general welfare. All of the carriers who locate on the structure will be FCC licensed providers of wireless telecommunications. Certainly, in the park, most of the people are going to be, you know, doing selfies and, you know, texting with their friends, but there is still the public safety benefit welfare for, you know, police, fire, emergency, any type of events that would take place in a park setting. We have benign commercial use. It has none of the traditional negative impacts associated with land development. There is no noise, no glare, no odor, no vibration, no noxious characteristics. Really, the only negative impact associated with this use comes down to the visibility. And once again, if we look at Exhibit A1 on the board, actually, there's 5B on the board, I see why you said B. So the, the exhibit, that's what the visibility would be associated with each one of these 18 structures, and certainly, I do not believe that that visibility would rise to the level of a substantial detriment. I do believe the board can grant this variance without a substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. You do have a wireless telecommunications ordinance in the township. It is really geared towards tall monopole structures and not this type of DAS structure, but under the purposes and intents of the ordinance, number four, strongly encourage the joint use of new and existing tower sites as a primary option rather than the construction of single-use towers. These are small towers, they're not single-use towers. As the radio frequency engineer mentioned, there could be three to four carriers locating on these. So it's a different type of installation than is contemplated by your ordinance, but certainly the, the same premise applies in this application. Under purpose number seven, ensure that all telecommunications facilities, including towers, antennas, and ancillary facilities, are located and designed to minimize the visual impact on the immediate surroundings and throughout the community. Well, when you look at that type of structure that we're proposing, number one, they're centrally located in the park. There is no impact on the community. Nobody's going to see it from their house, nobody's going to drive past it. The only people that are going to see that, these structures, are the people who pay to go in the, in the park, and they'll walk past them. So we certainly are not having a, a visual impact on the, of the community. And the rest of number seven is to configure the antennas in a way that minimizes the adverse in, visual impact of the towers and antennas through careful design, sighting, landscape, screening, and innovative camouflaging techniques. I certainly do believe that the structures that are proposed here would fall under the innovative camouflaging techniques. This type of DAS system allows three or four carriers to go in that one structure. If you had three or four carriers, you know, either doing individual towers or locating antennas other places in the parks, you know, on rooftops or other types of poles, we certainly would have a lot more impact, I almost want to say clutter, because it wouldn't be all grouped together and concealed in one structure like we have here. So for those reasons, I do believe we meet the purposes and intent of the ordinance, even though we do have our D3 deviation. So for those reasons, I do believe the site remains particularly suited for telecommunications facility, and the board can grant the D3 deviation for the ownership of the property and the landscape buffers that are contemplated by your ordinance. Thank you.
I have no further questions for this witness. Does the board have any questions?
Is there any increased exposure to RF energy generated by such an amount of, or increasing antennas to the public at large?
I believe the radio frequency engineer who spoke before me said that they had analyzed these and that they were all in compliance.
Thank you.
I'm not able to answer that. I know each, you know, I do work for the carriers, and I do know that the carriers under their FCC license are obligated to remain within compliance at all times. I don't, I don't know that they are testing.
Mr. Patel, can you answer that question?
So the studies were done with maximum power, so it cannot go above this limit because you cannot turn, the, the studies were done at max power, you cannot go more than that.
So, Madam Chair, again, I don't mean to keep bringing this point up, but I think as a reasonable condition should the board grant the relief, it should be a condition that the ultimate user, because remember, Crown Castle isn't providing the service. So while I appreciate Mr. Patel being up here, I, I need to draw that fine line. They're building sites, they're building poles, anyone who owns a telecommunications can put something up there. So it's not him who's going to make sure it's okay, it's the carrier that needs to make sure it's okay.
My point is that at some point, there's going to be multiple carriers on these antennas that are almost normally on the pole in the middle of a park with people walking all around. Typically, you saw a couple hours, you know, hiding away from people, and here they're all around, as well as the animal park and everything else. So how, as these things get built up, with more carriers putting them on, how will they go in to monitor and ensure that the level of RF energy that's coming off of these things is acceptable levels?
So every time Crown Castle colocates a carrier on a site, we do a new EMF study with that new carrier in mind. So right now, the studies are done with T-Mobile as a carrier with maximum power. Whenever Verizon and AT&amp;T joins, we'll do the same study with two-carrier maximum power and three-carrier maximum power to make sure that they are in compliance.
Madam Chair Lee? Oh, sorry. That's okay. Why don't you go first?
Can we have the frequency engineer come up again, please? How can we be assured that the pole will look like that? So let me try to explain why I'm thinking about that. Every time I see a pole go up for telecommunications, whatever it may be, you have different antennas popping up.
Yeah.
Different locations. This looks like, you know, a corn on a cob. Is that what it's always going to look like, and how do you guarantee that?
Yeah, so I think there should be an exhibit with the pole design shown, so if we can bring that up, I can go over the pole design, but the pole was designed with three to four carriers in mind, and that shows what equipment goes where in a particular slot.
Is that the one that looks like a tree or something?
So that's the same thing? Oh, yes, sorry.
So it's a little difficult to see in photos and pictures and sketches and whatnot, but the idea is, this is, this pole has been designed, there's a concrete foundation, a steel shaft, and then a radome concealment, which is a housing for all of the antenna units. So what you will see is the circular radome concealment, approximately 36 inches in diameter, which is a smooth profile that goes from approximately 22 feet above grade to the top, 36 feet above grade. So all of the equipment that would typically be visible on a monopole structure per se is inside that radome and invisible to the viewer.
So that dome cannot exceed 36 feet, 36 inches, was it inches in diameter?
Correct, unless that in the future were modified to expand larger, but that would not be part of this proposal.
So we can make that as a condition?
Yes, you can. That photo, that photo was done based upon the dimensions on the engineering drawings. So to answer your question before, whether there's one carrier, two carriers, three carriers, or four, from the outside, you won't be able to tell, because all the equipment will be concealed, so the, the visibility associated with it will not change.
Okay, my other question is concerning safety. The picture that you had shown us before, that one, that picture that we're looking at on the screen, I've never seen, as many times as I've been to, to the park, that few kids. What's the toppling distance on these things? I mean, it looks like you got them close to areas where kids are going to be in. I mean, I see tables there, things of that nature. What's the toppling distance? Well, it's 36, they're 36 feet. Well, it's 36, they're 36 feet high.
Yes.
So you gotta at least have a toppling distance of 36 feet. Could be more than that, obviously.
Yes, I can speak to that. My company also did the structural design and analysis of the pole itself. It is designed in accordance with all applicable codes and standards. In this case, it would be IBC and the TIA 222 requirements. Structurally speaking, the governing rating of the pole is governed by the foundation at 85% capacity. That would be governed by the soil foundation interaction, so geotechnical capacity of the structure. The actual structural steel is rated at approximately 75% of the code allowable limits. So what I'm getting at is structurally, you have a 25% reserve capacity plus the code required factors of safety.
Do we know what the wind resistance is? How?
Yeah, we analyze that for a design wind speed. I would have to double-check the report. I believe it's an ultimate wind speed of 115 miles per hour, but I may be off on that slightly.
More than hurricane speed?
It's, effectively, it's a 1% chance of occurring in a given year for that wind speed.
Okay. And one other question, if I may, to the planner. This is a D3 variance, correct?
Yeah.
All right. In spite of the, the conditions that are not met, can you give me an opinion, supported by fact, as to why these locations are appropriate in spite of the variations?
Appropriate for which aspect?
Well, doesn't this board have to look on a conditional use? That the use that's being proposed, that violates some of the, let me change that, that doesn't comply with some of the conditions, that the site is still appropriate for the use?
Yes, that's how the, under the term square versus left foot, you, the framers of the ordinance already determined that this was an appropriate location.
As it is a conditionally permitted location, the deviations we have here are related to the ownership of the property. We are a fourth priority. We are not the municipality or an agency of the municipality. That's one of our deviations. So I don't believe the fact that this is a private entity that owns the property does change the suitability of the location. The other deviation is related to the required landscape buffer. That, as I stated, those buffers really are not designed for these type of small towers. Your ordinance is based upon a macro tower situation where, once again, I stated that normally you have a compound, the bottom 50 by 50, 100 by 100, you have three or four carriers with equipment located inside the compound, and then you have the fence and you put a heavy landscape buffer around it. So in those install, in those type of installations, the landscape buffer is appropriate. These locations inside the park with a 30-foot tall, or 36-foot tall tower, you really don't need that type of buffer at the base of the tower because there's no equipment on the ground. There's no fence. There's just the base of the tower that you see in the photo. So for those reasons, I don't think either one of those deviations impact this application, and that's why I believe the site does remain particularly suited under the D3 analysis.
Would you agree with me that since the service that's being provided is for the park itself, that, in quotes, that these towers are not inherently beneficial?
The service is not for the park itself. Crown Castle is a third-party infrastructure contractor. They are developing this for FCC-licensed providers of wireless telecommunications. Nobody else is going to be able to use the frequencies on these towers besides the FCC-licensed carriers in this area.
I thought the testimony, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought the testimony was in the area of, it's not a, it's not for the general public, let me change that, it's not for the, not for the roadway system, but it's necessary for the users in the park in a capacity issue.
That's correct. The users, but you, when you were saying park, I thought you meant the ownership of the park.
I'm talking about the geographical area of the park.
Yes. These 18 locations are in the center of the park. They are providing capacity to the users in the park. The users in the park are ones that have phones from all the FCC-licensed carriers. There is no coverage from these 18 to the outside the park property. But there's still the public benefit associated with having phone service based from an FCC-licensed carrier.
Well, that, that public benefit initially was for the traveling public. Now we're talking about data. Are we talking about internet access?
All the services the carriers provide, yes. I, right out front, said most people using their phones inside this park, they're not working. They're, they're not, they're taking selfies, they're texting, but they're still, the carriers still have FCC license to provide coverage to this, to this park, this area. There can be emergencies, there could be health emergencies, there could be police situations, fire, any of those things where you'd still want to have phone service available. And as the radio frequency engineer testified to, the existing tower there, all the carriers have coverage. If you go there when the park's closed, your phone's going to work fine. But on the days that the park's full and there's capacity issues, that's when your phone could not work in those type of situations. So, so there's coverage everywhere. The gaps are based upon the capacity issues at the park when the park is full. And as the engineer stated perfectly at the beginning, this is the optimum type of installation to have in an outdoor situation where you have large crowds of people. This is the best way to provide it. Otherwise, you would be building tower, big towers all around the property when you don't need them because there's coverage already there. You have to address the capacity issues. That's why these towers aren't placed on a grid through the park. They're strategically located on the areas where large, you know, large groups of people would gather and create capacity issues.
Okay, thank you. Do we know of any of these types of towers located elsewhere in Jackson?
No, I am not familiar with any.
And what's the, you know, if, if we grant this type of application, are we establishing a precedent for other carriers that come in and say, you know, you granted this pole, can we have one of these distributed type poles located, you know, 50 feet away from our pole?
Well, Crown Castle's building this for all the carriers, so another carrier doesn't have to come in and say, I want to build it. You'll say, hey, wait, we just approved 18 nodes for Crown. Go talk to them.
Well, my concern is outside of the park.
Outside of the park. I, I mean, I don't know if you have another location in the municipality where you have, you know, an outdoor thing where you have large crowds gather like that.
That's the problem. We don't know.
Well.
All of a sudden, here they go. All right, thank you.
You know, I don't think we can use this application to set a precedent for another application. Each application has to be looked at separately.
I heard that someone, you know, saying in 21.
The documentation may be slightly unclear with respect to 21 feet. The steel shaft is 21 feet tall, and then the radome comes to a total height of 36 foot two and a half. So there, I think the engineer's letter maybe referenced that shorter height, if I'm not mistaken.
That's likely a typo or some sort of misrepresentation, but I can testify to the fact that the proposed pole is 36 foot two and a half inches plus or minus.
So you can claim that the overall height of the antenna system is a maximum of 36 feet two and a half inches?
Correct.
Thank you.
And that's what the photo simulation was based upon. I used the engineering drawings at 36 feet two and a half inches.
I do. Mr. Peters, I have a question for you.
I didn't testify.
Huh?
I didn't testify.
I would, I would very much love that. I have reviewed your report, and I noticed that there seems to be some sort of discrepancy within our ordinances regarding wireless communication towers, or facilities, is how I'll put it. The applicant's requested a D3 variance, which is a conditional use variance, but I note that pursuant to 244, 231A, wireless telecommunications facilities are permitted condition, are permitted conditional uses on lands owned by the township, the township municipal utilities authority, or any other public entity within the township. And then we have a discrepancy because Section 244, 230G says that all telecommunications facilities in the township of Jackson shall be conditional uses in accordance with NJSA Clearly, Six Flags is not township-owned property, nor is it owned by any other public entity. My question to you is, is a D3 variance the appropriate variance, or would it be a D1 variance?
I believe it's a D3 variance. The, this ordinance goes back to the, the original adoption of the telecommunications ordinance for the township goes back to December of 2000. If you think about that, cell phones and cell towers became a planning issue in the 90s. So at the end of the 90s, the municipality decided to put a prioritization or a citing set of standards together, and that's what we have. I'm not sure that this type of technology existed 24 years ago. I won't testify for the applicant, but I can tell you, I've sat through dozens of cell tower applications in, from 2000 to 2015, they were all poles. Monopoles, lattice towers, those sorts that we were worried about. The power output, we were worried if you could get communication on a highway, in your car, from pole to pole. That's not what this distributed antenna system really is. However, that's the ordinance that we have in place. So in December of 2024, in our year-end report, we're going to write to the governing body that we have distributed antenna systems, which are basically little, like we used to call them burst cell towers, like you'd see in an inner city. We don't have a great set of standards for that. However, because that is, and Evan had made a point to me off the record, that if this was like a police or radio band, this is a Wi-Fi system, they wouldn't even be here. But it's a telecommunications system, so they fall under the telecommunications ordinance. I don't take any exception to Mr. Cronk's testimony. It's responsive to how our ordinance, which was adopted in December of 2000, reads. It is clearly apparent that the town determined that cell towers were a conditional use within the town. And the purpose in, the purpose and intent statement says that the purpose of this article is to establish guidelines for the sighting of wireless telecommunications towers and antennas, along with ancillary facilities. And then the goals were, as Mr. Cronk had indicated, the sighting standards. So it's apparent to me, and it has been, I've had the opportunity to represent out of the planning or zoning board for most of the last 24 years, that these were intended to be conditional uses. And respectfully, the sighting issue was if we have to have those 150-foot towers, the municipality or the taxpayers of Jackson should be getting some of that rent money. So that's the reason for the sighting on municipally-owned lands, on MUA-owned lands, that money should get back into ratepayer or taxpayer's pockets, as opposed to, the last thing would be to put it on a private site where someone else would generate the revenue from it. So again, getting back to Mr. Cronk's testimony, I do believe it's a D3 conditional use variance application. I think he's gone through the priority standards. I believe he's gone through the goals that are in the outline or in the intent and purpose section of the ordinance, and I don't take any exception to the testimony as provided so far.
So would it be fair to say that, and perhaps maybe I'm shortening this, and if I'm incorrect, you know, I want the board to understand this, would it be fair to say that one of the conditions that the applicant is deviating from is the condition that the land where these towers are placed is owned by the township or another public entity? Would that be a fair representation?
Well, obviously, this site is, and it's great adventure.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So that would be one of the reasons for the D3 conditional use.
Yes.
Variance, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have no other witnesses. I will conclude our presentation. No, I don't have any remarks, Matt. I would just like to say, I believe we've presented a case for why our application should be granted, and I look forward to hearing the board's decision. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes.
It's late, I'm tired. Yes, briefly, our, Mr. Peters doesn't take any objection to Mr. Cronk's planning testimony. The site seems appropriate. It's located inside, they've established the maximum height. It makes sense to me, the testimony, that they don't need the landscape buffer, given the nature, the way the pole is, is set up, so the request for the waiver on that seems reasonable, and I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, Mr. Hurley.
Madam Chair. The only concern I have with this application is the number of poles. I've always been concerned about these, these monopoles, it doesn't end up looking like Oklahoma in the early 1900s, where we had, you know, these oil wells all over the place and it just gets crazy. The interesting thing about this application, I think, is that this type of pole has probably not been contemplated by the governing body when the ordinance had, had been adopted. I understand the testimony from the radio frequency engineer that there is a need for these poles throughout the park because of a capacity issue, that the number of people utilizing this facility by virtue of the mass number creates a problem for capacity in this specific location. I think this application, it's a conditional use application. I think the locations that have been indicated by the applicant are appropriate to the specific areas and use of the, the park itself. That any approval, if, if granted by this board, make it clear that the reason for the approval is that because of the property's use, which is recreational, entertainment, high-volume users, things of that nature, so that Verizon doesn't come in, you know, in seven months and say, you know, I want to use one of these low poles, I'm having some capacity problem for this given area, but I'll need three or four poles to satisfy that. I think this is unique because of the, the specific use of the property itself as being recreational, as I said, entertainment, things of that nature. But in addition to that, the high volume of users of the park itself, and based on that condition, I would be inclined to, to grant the variance. I think the conditions that are imposed, that they not exceed the 36 feet two and a, was it two and a half inches in height, that the diameter of the antenna area where they are being contained does not exceed 36 inches in diameter, that the users of the property must have an FCC license for that purpose. We don't know that yet. All we're told is that the user will have an FCC license. I think we should make that as a condition of use because the FCC, FCC license presupposes a general benefit to the general public, and we haven't heard any, any proof as to who the users are. But as a condition of approval that the users must, must obtain an FCC license. Any other? Any other conditions I'd be willing to listen to, but based on that, I think it's appropriate to give it a D3. I think the uses, the locations of these poles, the need for the poles because of the area and use of the property is satisfied, and that the location of the poles are, in fact, appropriate for the area being used satisfies a D3.
We have a motion and a second. Do you want to add those things to, would you like to amend your motion to include those?
Absolutely.
And I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Ms. Parnas?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes. Your variance has been granted, Mr. Parkman. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?